Good afternoon, buenas tardes and welcome to our November 9th Board of Education Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPs staff and our community who are joining us here today and those who are watching via livestream. I will call the roll to recognize board members and establish that we have a quorum. Mr. Said.
Hello everyone, Sammy Said, student member of the board. I'm super excited to be here on this wonderful November afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lynn Harris, at-large member, I use she/her pronouns and welcome.
Good morning, Rebecca Smodrowski, District 2.
Good morning, Shepherd Evans, District 4.
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good afternoon, Buenas tardes, Grace Rivera Uven, District 1.
Good afternoon, Julie Yang, District 3. Happy to be here.
Now we can begin the meeting with the approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Now we can begin by having our proclamation in honor of Veterans Day.
Great, thank you President Sivestre. I read this proclamation in honor of veterans. Whereas airmen, Marines, sailors, soldiers, members of the Coast Guard and members of the Space Force are part of an unbroken chain of brave patriots who serve and who have served this country with honor and who have made tremendous sacrifices so that we may live free. And whereas the brave men and women of our Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Navy and Space Force demonstrate a resolute spirit and unmatched selflessness. And whereas we reflect on the immeasurable burdens borne by so few in the name of so many. And we rededicate ourselves to supporting those who have worn America's service uniforms and the families that stand alongside them. And whereas we remember these heroes for their valor, their loyalty and their dedication, their selfless sacrifice continues to inspire us today. And whereas our country forever is indebted to our veterans and their quiet courage and exemplary service. We also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools and Montgomery County Public School students, staff, parents and guardians and the entire community salute the sacrifices of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces and hereby recognize Saturday, November 11th, 2023 as Veterans Day.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands and that is unanimous. We now welcome the caller guard from Kennedy High School, Cadet Lieutenant Commander Nishtha Saxena, Cadet Eric Zuniga, Cadet Petty Officer 2nd Class Ivania Franco Valdivia and Cadet Seaman Catherine Agosto Perez.
Colors. Ho. Present. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Colors. Ho. Present. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Colors.
Now we can begin by having our proclamation in honor of Veterans Day.
Great, thank you President Sivestre. I read this proclamation in honor of veterans. Whereas airmen, Marines, sailors, soldiers, members of the Coast Guard and members of the Space Force are part of an unbroken chain of brave patriots who serve and who have served this country with honor and who have made tremendous sacrifices so that we may live free. And whereas the brave men and women of our Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Navy and Space Force demonstrate a resolute spirit and unmatched selflessness. And whereas we reflect on the immeasurable burdens borne by so few in the name of so many. And we rededicate ourselves to supporting those who have worn America's service uniforms and the families that stand alongside them. And whereas we remember these heroes for their valor, their loyalty and their dedication, their selfless sacrifice continues to inspire us today. And whereas our country forever is indebted to our veterans and their quiet courage and exemplary service. We also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools and Montgomery County Public School students, staff, parents and guardians and the entire community salute the sacrifices of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces and hereby recognize Saturday, November 11th, 2023 as Veterans Day.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands and that is unanimous. We now welcome the caller guard from Kennedy High School, Cadet Lieutenant Commander Nishtha Saxena, Cadet Eric Zuniga, Cadet Petty Officer 2nd Class Ivania Franco Valdivia and Cadet Seaman Catherine Agosto Perez.
Colors. Ho. Present. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Colors. Ho. Present. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Colors. Ho. Present. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Colors. Ready, cut.
Now we can begin by having our proclamation in honor of Veterans Day.
Great, thank you President Sivestre. I read this proclamation in honor of veterans. Whereas airmen, Marines, sailors, soldiers, members of the Coast Guard and members of the Space Force are part of an unbroken chain of brave patriots who serve and who have served this country with honor and who have made tremendous sacrifices so that we may live free. And whereas the brave men and women of our Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Navy and Space Force demonstrate a resolute spirit and unmatched selflessness. And whereas we reflect on the immeasurable burdens borne by so few in the name of so many. And we rededicate ourselves to supporting those who have worn America's service uniforms and the families that stand alongside them. And whereas we remember these heroes for their valor, their loyalty and their dedication, their selfless sacrifice continues to inspire us today. And whereas our country forever is indebted to our veterans and their quiet courage and exemplary service. We also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools and Montgomery County Public School students, staff, parents and guardians and the entire community salute the sacrifices of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces and hereby recognize Saturday, November 11th, 2023 as Veterans Day.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands and that is unanimous.
Just the first lights on. I won't be able to turn them on.
Could we have those microphone lights turned off?
Turn them off when the cadets leave.
Okay.
Wait, no, there's a school there, right?
I will. Thank you Kennedy High School caller guard for joining us here today.
March time. March.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to our November 9th Board of Education Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPS staff, and our community who are joining us here today and those who are watching via livestream. I will call the role to recognize board members and establish that we have a quorum. Mr. Said.
Hello, everyone. Sammy Said, student member of the board. I'm super excited to be here on this wonderful November afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lynn Harris, at-large member. I use she/her pronouns, and welcome.
Good morning. Rebecca Smodrowski, District 2.
Good morning. Shepard Evans, District 4.
Good afternoon. Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes. Grace Rivera Uven, District 1.
Good afternoon. Julie Yang, District 3. Happy to be here.
Now, we can begin the meeting with the approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. We now welcome the caller, guard from Kennedy High School, Cadet Lieutenant Commander Nishtha Saxena, Cadet Eric Zuniga, Cadet Petty Officer 2nd Class Ivania Franco Valdivia, and Cadet Semin Catherine Augusto Perez.
Color guard, attention. Carry. Colors. Ready, cut, forward, march. Colors.
Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Ready, cut.
Now, we can begin by having our proclamation in honor of Veterans Day.
Great. Thank you, President Silvestre. I read this proclamation in honor of veterans. Whereas airmen, Marines, sailors, soldiers, members of the Coast Guard, and members of the Space Force are part of an unbroken chain of brave patriots who serve and who have served this country with honor and who have made tremendous sacrifices so that we may live free. And whereas the brave men and women of our Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Navy, and Space Force demonstrate a resolute spirit and unmatched selflessness. And whereas we reflect on the immeasurable burdens borne by so few in the name of so many. And we rededicate ourselves to supporting those who have worn America's service uniforms and the families that stand alongside them. And whereas we remember these heroes for their valor, their loyalty, and their dedication, their selfless sacrifice continues to inspire us today. And whereas our country forever is indebted to our veterans and their quiet courage and exemplary service, we also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and Montgomery County Public Schools students, staff, parents and guardians, and the entire community salute the sacrifices of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces and hereby recognize Saturday, November 11th, 2023 as Veterans Day.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous.
Just the first light's on. I won't be able to turn them off.
Could we have those microphone lights turned on?
Turn them off when the cadets leave.
Okay.
We acknowledge the school there, right?
I will. Thank you, Kennedy High School color guard for joining us here today.
March time. March. Colors. Hope. Forward. March.
All right, we are now moving on to our third agenda item, the Human Resources and Development. Can I get a motion to move the monthly report?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous. Mr. Hull, I think we have some resolutions, death resolutions?
All right. So this is in recognition of National Inclusive Schools Week. Whereas the Inclusive Schools Network and Stenson and Associates Incorporated has designated the week of December 4th through 8th, 2023 as National Inclusive Schools Week, celebrating the theme "Draw Me In." And whereas Montgomery County Public Schools is committed to providing a high-quality, world-class education that ensures success for every student through excellence in teaching and learning. And whereas the educators and families of Montgomery County Public Schools work collaboratively to ensure that all classrooms provide an effective instructional program which incorporates inclusive practices in all schools. And whereas Montgomery County Public Schools celebrates the progress schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse population. And whereas Montgomery County Public Schools is committed to prioritizing access to the least restrictive environment by providing rigorous instruction and appropriate services and supports to meet the needs of all learners, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preferences, or other factors. And whereas Montgomery County Public Schools delivers a continuum of special education services for students with disabilities in the general education environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Public Schools join with the Inclusive Schools Network declaring the week of December 4th through 8th, 2023 as National Inclusive Schools Week and supports appropriate activities for educators, students, parents, and guardians to discuss the actions that should be taken to ensure that schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all students.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. I believe we have two death resolutions as well. Mr. Hull?
I don't believe I have those in my packet here. Okay, thank you. Okay. Whereas the death on September 18th, 2023 of Mr. James Laws, bus operator at West Farm Depot, deeply has saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. And whereas during the year Mr. Laws worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, he proved himself an exceptionally dedicated, organized, and well-respected by his colleagues. He endeavored each day to maintain a safe and positive environment for students and ensure the students arrive at school on time and ready to learn. And whereas Mr. Laws, his consistently reliable team member, was a consistently reliable team member who understood the importance of his position to the success of MCPS students, he was patient with and respectful of students, their families, and his coworkers. Mr. Laws developed excellent working relationships with his colleagues and was especially kind to students. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the death of Mr. Laws and extend deepest sympathies to his family. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Mr. Laws.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous.
Whereas the death on September 30th, 2023 of Mr. Kevin Palafax, classroom teacher at Bethesda Chevy Chase High School, deeply had saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. And whereas during the one-plus year that Mr. Palafax worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, he fostered a classroom environment that encouraged knowledge sharing among students. He played a significant role in promoting a positive school atmosphere by establishing meaningful connections with his students and team members. Whereas Mr. Palafax skillfully implemented equitable classroom practices to enhance student participation. He carefully modified his instruction to meet the individual student needs. Mr. Palafax regularly encouraged his students, emphasizing the importance of collaboration and helped them make personal connections with their lessons. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the death of Mr. Palafax and extend deepest sympathies to his family. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Mr. Palafax.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Okay, we have one recommended appointment today, and because it is a board position, I get to introduce Ms. Shannon Pattyfoot, if you could please stand, as Director, Board Senior Analyst in the Board of Education. And she is here with us today. Joining her today is her mother, Carol Blanks, Councilwoman, West Hartford, Connecticut. Ms. Pattyfoot brings to Montgomery County Public Schools experience in program management and strategic planning in both districts and the private sector. She looks forward to joining the board to better support our students, families, staff, and school communities. A shout out to her sister Cynthia, who is watching online.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous. All right. I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Brian Hull, our Chief Operating Officer, for sitting in on this meeting today as Dr. McKnight continues to recuperate. We will now move on to public comments. This public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disruptive or disrespectful behavior during public comments may be asked to leave the room. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have 13 people signed up to provide in-person testimony. Each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the table, speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have seven people signed up to provide video testimony. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on board docs where they are posted with other materials for this meeting. And just as a reminder, please stay within your time allotment. We will now have our first speakers to come forward. Ryder Miles, Carolyn Thompson, and Andrew Winter. You may begin.
Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to speak here today. I'll keep it pretty short. My name is Ryder Miles. I'm a junior at Northwood High School, and I'm here to talk about the importance of the recently introduced safety resolution. Every student has a story. Every student has a story that they would tell you if you were ever to ask them if they felt unsafe in school. No matter if they're from Rockville, RM, Springbrook, or Blair, every student has a time they can think back to where they personally felt threatened inside school. Therefore, it is not about any single person's story, but rather a collective uneasy feeling from every kid in this county that we must actively work to create safer schools. This resolution takes critical and proactive steps towards safer schools, such as increased training for our security staff, improved observational infrastructure, and an anonymous app for students to submit vital information. Therefore, distinguished members, I respectfully urge you to vote in favor of this resolution to create a safer county, not for any one, but for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Good afternoon, board members and Superintendent McKnight. I'm an ELD teacher from Gaithersburg High School, and I'm speaking today on behalf of MCEA. My student, whom I'll call Sophia, made the dangerous journey from El Salvador to the US with her mom only a year ago. She's an EML student who qualifies for reading intervention because she had an interrupted education. MCPS uses the term METS for these students. Sophia and her classmates are highly motivated to read stories from relatable texts, so I often use bilingual stories written by Central American teens. Over the past four years, teaching students like Sophia, in addition to carefully selecting appropriate materials, I have used System 44 and Read 180 programs very sparingly because they're designed for native speakers with reading difficulties. These programs are incompatible with the needs of EML students. This year, however, METS reading teachers have been instructed to follow the prescriptive Read 180 program. Consequently, my normally enthusiastic student Sophia, like her peers, is far less engaged. Insisting a vendor dictate how we teach threatens our ability to use culturally responsive teaching, trauma-informed practices, and anti-racist pedagogy. Students like Sophia are becoming disinterested, even re-traumatized by Read 180. Failing our EMLs now means worse long-term outcomes beyond the classroom, impacting employment, even incarceration rates. Sophia's mother didn't risk everything for her daughter to fall through the cracks in our community. Sophia and all EMLs are entitled to the high-quality education MCPS is known for, but the district did not even consult with ELD teachers before purchasing Read 180. Why isn't METS curriculum and all high school ELD curriculum subject to a review process, including real collaboration with classroom practitioners? MCEA calls on you to allow us, to allow us, the professionals in the classroom, the ability to provide our most impacted students like Sophia excellent instruction and not a canned program designed for a different set of students.
Thank you. Mr. Winter?
Good afternoon, President Silvestre, board members, and Mr. Hull. Last March, I came before you and shared about the founding of the Montgomery County Jewish Educators Alliance, MCJEA, and why we formed. I shared with you our goals, our intentions, and plans. However, things changed abruptly on October 7th with the terrorist acts by Hamas on Israel. Since that horrific day, our group has met, consoled each other, and expressed concerns and noted a dramatic increase of antisemitism and disturbing activity on social media. Nearly daily, I hear from educators, students, parents, or community members of rising concerns seeking support, guidance, or just an opportunity to share. What is happening is deeply concerning, it's personal, and it's urgently important. MCJEA is committed to making a difference, and yesterday we had our most recent meeting. This meeting was different because we had two executive leaders of MCPS join us, Acting Deputy Superintendent Dr. Betty Collins and Chief of Staff Mr. Brian Stockton. We are grateful that both these leaders were able to join us and for taking time to listen, to hear us, and to hopefully use the input that was provided to determine a better way forward. At the meeting, there were many voices of educators, parents, community members, and students who expressed thoughts and ideas. Among the thoughts shared were Jewish educators and families feeling marginalized and in fear of what is happening with rising antisemitism, social media posts, and a lack of empathy for Jewish educators and students. Make no mistake about it, our Jewish, our MCPS Jewish community is not okay. Ideas shared included the creation of a dashboard to track incidents of antisemitism, Holocaust education, mandated compliance training on antisemitism, formal disciplinary action for MCPS employees and students who engage in hate speech, and a central office Jewish advisory committee comprised of many. Yesterday was a start, but we know it's just a step. MCJEA is committed to continuing to work collaboratively, transparently, and productively with MCPS leadership to ensure our Jewish staff, students, and families feel valued, seen, and heard, and most importantly, safe. As Ellie Weisell once said, "The opposite of love is not hate, its indifference and action is the only remedy to indifference." Let us work together, because never again is now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could get our next three speakers to please come forward. Abby Sharofsky, Joseph Typograph, and Christine Handy. Abby, you may begin.
Members of the Montgomery County Board of Education, good afternoon. I am Rabbi Abby Sharofsky, Director of Intergroup Relations and Rabbi in Residence for the JCRC, the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Washington. I am also the parent of two MCPS students and an active PTA participant. This past month has been excruciatingly difficult time for MCPS's Jewish stakeholders, which I've witnessed both as a Jewish communal professional and in my role as a parent. The common thread in all conversations, all meetings, whether with Jewish teachers and administrators, or parents or students, has been pain, the feeling of hurt, of not being seen in moments of tremendous, unprecedented horror for the Jewish people. We appreciate the long-running partnership JCRC has had with MCPS and the support we've received throughout many challenging times. I'm here today to tell you that what we are experiencing now is different. Antisemitism is not new, but this level of pain and fear is. The events of October 7th have awoken the intergenerational collective trauma of the Jewish people, as we struggle to comprehend the tremendous loss of life, the barbaric nature of Hamas's attack, and the taking of 240 hostages, some as young as nine months old. We continue to struggle with the terrible loss of lives in Gaza and Israel. At the same time, we are confronting an unprecedented 400% increase in antisemitic incidents nationwide since October 7th. The JCRC staff has been inundated with an avalanche of requests, and many have experienced implicit and explicit antisemitism connected to the war within our schools. At this moment, more than ever before, we need our schools to be a place of safety and security for our teachers and students. We are grateful for our partnership with MCPS. We already had in place and a program. We already had training teachers and administrators about antisemitism, anti-Zionism, Jewish identity, and the Holocaust. We have trained over 1,000 educators in the last months alone, and we urge MCPS to make this a priority, particularly the trainings JCRC and ADL have successfully led for many students and administrators. We need to feel safe and heard.
Joseph?
Thank you. I'm also here to discuss how MCPS must first educate itself and then its students on the antisemitism running rampant in America today. In MCPS schools, we've seen swastikas on desks and walls, Jewish students bullied with hateful comments, and now a school-approved anti-Israel walkouts. Imagine being a Jewish kid in MCPS today. MCPS could barely condemn the terrorist attacks on Israel in October 7th when Americans were killed. How will it combat antisemitism in its schools? For decades, radical Islamist regimes have funneled billions of dollars to Hamas and our universities to impose the view on American college students that Jews are the oppressors of Palestinian people and that Israel must be destroyed. This propaganda hides that it is actually Hamas that is sacrificing Palestinian people when it destroys their infrastructure, steals their humanitarian aid, and instigates conflict with no concern for lives lost. Now, a Harvard-Harris poll shows a third of Americans aged 18 to 24 say October 7th was a lie. Half of students that age say it was justified. Our teachers in MCPS are ill-equipped to combat this type of misinformation. It has been simmering for a generation. To defeat it, MCPS must be thorough and honest about how well-intentioned initiatives like DEI have become entangled in the propaganda machine. Training staff to see people through a binary of oppressor and oppressed over oversimplifies complex dynamics, hinders genuine understanding, creates divisiveness, and makes students feel safe, unsafe, and unwelcome. To preserve a truly diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture within MCPS, we need to train, hire, survey teachers, so we have educators who understand antisemitism as defined by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, which the county has adopted. We need Holocaust and Jewish history education, and we need to critically examine how foreign influence over education is attacking core American values. My name is Joe Typograph. I am a MCPS graduate. I have a daughter who is four years old, and I hope someday to feel safe sending her to MCPS schools. Thank you.
Dr. Handy?
Good afternoon. Our esteemed Student Member of the Board, Mr. Sammy Said, has put forth a resolution aimed at fortifying safety and security within our schools, a matter of unequivocal importance for fostering an atmosphere where teaching and learning can thrive. As the vanguard of our schools, each administrator upholds a steadfast commitment to safeguarding our students, staff, and families. McCap commends Mr. Said's initiative and valuable insight derived from our student body, which have manifested into a resolution. I want to commend his proactive approach to preventative measures. It is a comprehensive resolution that addresses many important areas within student safety. However, as I have come to this table many times before sharing, further discussion and collaboration needs to occur with school leaders about implementing what is proposed in this resolution. School safety is a shared responsibility, and a resolution can only have the desired impact if time has been invested with practitioners and stakeholders on how to operationalize what is written. Let us consider, for instance, the practicalities involved in managing the identification process for all students upon entry, particularly in our most populous high schools. Adapting staffing and entry logistics demands thorough deliberation and analysis and an analysis of the staffing required to implement the plan. McCap's position on the primacy of safety and security in our schools remains unwavering. Our leaders are adept at navigating an array of challenges, from ghost guns, bomb threats, to issues of bullying, substance abuse, custody issues, hate bias, graffiti, and beyond. Therefore, I urge the Board to consider deferring this resolution's passage, allowing for substantial engagement with us, the school leaders, on the specifics of this application. We are wholeheartedly committed to this partnership and to the pursuit of ensuring a secure learning environment for all members of our school communities. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to collaborate on this vital endeavor.
Thank you. If we could get our next three speakers to please come forward. Ricky Ribero, Fasika Demtu, and Helen Gebre-Michael.
Hello, good afternoon, Board. I'm Ricky Ribero, and I'm the Vice President of the John F. Kennedy High School PTSA, and I'm here to support the safety and security resolution put forth by Student Member of the Board Sammy Said. I was here last school year to testify about the concerning state of safety and security in MCPS, and I'm sad to say that it's not clear, standing before you in November of this school year, what or how much has changed. Last spring, MCPS put out an action plan that outlined immediate, short-term, and long-term next steps in response to media reports about bathroom safety, student overdoses, and a rash of school fights on campuses. One of those action items, establishing an MCPS Safety and Security Advisory Group, did happen, and I know this because I'm on it. And while I appreciate the efforts to have conversations, there isn't a single change that has come from that group yet. Part of this is due to the fact that momentum was completely lost when the previous Chief Safety Officer vacated his position, and I wish nothing but the best for the new Chief Safety Officer, Pam Wheeler-Taylor, and I've seen her take arrows with grace and composure, but we're basically back at square one with this group. Other promised changes that have yet to get any kind of update or even a roadmap include potential revisions to the Code of Conduct and the CEO MOU, and results from the announced student badge and vape detector pilots. I have been asking every month for an update on the vape detection pilots since they were announced, and I've yet to get one. And now, I've heard that the detectors have already been removed in some schools. So when this Board and system say that it's enhancing student safety and security, what does that mean? Promising changes with no follow-up, no clear next steps, no data, and no transparency is not a way to make meaningful progress toward a truly safe and secure school environment. In addition to supporting the resolution put forth by Mr. Said, I urge the Board not to wait until April to get an update on safety and security. Whether it's bomb threats at Blair or Einstein or a student with a gun on campus at Walter Johnson, the delicate state of safety in MCPS cannot wait that long for change. The Board should, in my opinion, be discussing safety and security at least once a month, and it should be a routine item on your agendas and a consistent priority that you make progress toward. Thank you.
Thank you. Fasika?
Hello, Board members and Dr. McKnight. My name is Fasika Demtu and a mother of a Montgomery County student. I'm here in front of you for the third time requesting for the opt-out. We are living in this highly sexualized world, and the public school is following this lead by becoming a place to teach sexual illusions of perverts. We have been trying to tell you about our stand and moral grounds when it comes to sexualizing our children, and it doesn't look like you care or understand. There are numerous studies in young children's exposure to developmentally inappropriate sexual materials can scare and confuse them about their own sexuality. In a study published in 2018 titled, "Parent Reports of Adolescents and Young Adults Perceived to Show Signs of a Rapid Onset of Gender Dysphoria", out of 256 parent surveys, 62.5% of the kids showed mental health decline and gender dysphoria after being exposed to such content. My point is, if you continuously expose a certain topic to kids, it is bound that the kids will contemplate with the idea, picture themselves in those stories you read, and experiment. Their mind is not mature enough to deal with such content. Hence, they most likely develop confusion with their sexuality. The idea that diversity is our strength sounds great, but without a set of shared goals, values, and morals, we have set the stage for chaos. We, the parents, are the primary teachers of our children, not you. We can help our children by answering their questions and act proactively by helping them make sense of the sexual messages they encounter. Thank you, but we do not need your help. Our kids are already inclusive without your sexualized readings. Please restore the opt-out. Thank you.
Helen, you may begin.
Ms. Gebre-Michael just spoke in Amahark, and I will read her testimony in English. Good afternoon. My name is Helen Gebre-Michael. I am a resident of Montgomery County and a mother of two daughters. I appear before you today to ask you to revise your discriminatory, divisive, child-harming LGBTQ policy to a non-divisive and non-discriminatory policy. At this same board meeting, I repeatedly heard from supporters of your policy that 45% of students in the LGBTQ community have considered or attempted suicide. So how can I send my children to a school that teaches behavior and attitudes that I believe are harmful to my children's lives and whose harmfulness is proven by the data provided by the supporters through books that preach good things? It is no secret to the members of this Board that it is not only students from the LGBTQ community who attend a school where their own and their family's character, culture, and personal views are not reflected. It is also well-known that the solution to this alarming rate of suicidal ideation is not to preach LGBTQ ideology to other students at school. The books you put in your English class are not written to teach equality, but to promote and endorse same-sex relationships and transgenderism. The texts put forward by the Curriculum Department of this Board of Education to evaluate the books or texts that claim books should be evaluated in their ability to change social behaviors using the English-language classrooms. I have every natural, religious, and constitutional right to think and believe that same-sex relationships are wrong, harmful, and sinful, just like any other thing that I believe is harmful to my child's physical health, social interaction, and psychology. I am sure that you are sworn up to know the difference between hating a person and hating a behavior. According to First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, the government can endorse whether same-sex relationships or transgenderism or any individual attitude, behavior, belief is right or wrong. However, because of this Board's decision to endorse personal views disregarding the law and equality, I face extreme distress, and since it is my natural duty to save and care for my children, I am forced to send my, I am forced to send them to a private school at great financial burden. Like any policy that aims to forcefully change the beliefs of a community, your LGBTQ policy is a policy that doesn't make sure equality, but rather is discriminatory, selective rather than inclusive, divisive rather than unifying. Therefore, I request that you replace this policy that approves of same-sex relationships and transsexualism with a policy of equality and that the books included in English teaching for this purpose be removed.
Thank you. Thank you again. That was the translation of Ms. Gebre-Michael's testimony. Our next three speakers are Audra Dove, Edith Juarez, and Paul Jaskus.
You may begin. I thank MCPS for implementing study sync in place of Curriculum 2.0, and I value the diverse and inclusive texts MCPS has included. The curriculum, however, is not being implemented with integrity throughout the county. Variances are found in both high and low-farm schools and aren't merely teacher adjustments meant to address student needs. Variances limit, and in some cases exclude, access to curriculum materials and instruction. For example, there are classrooms that neither read a novel per quarter nor read accompanying texts in the curriculum. Some classes barely use the curriculum, while others follow it faithfully. Many of the reading materials offer little to no above-grade-level exposure to rigorous vocabulary and sentence structure, though this is needed to build strong writers and readers. Unfortunately, English 9, 10, and the English 9 pilot can further compound disparities. Too much text choice can limit exposure to rigorous texts. Some classes rely heavily on excerpts versus whole text. Autonomy should be tethered to an outside curriculum with clearly-defined implementation expectations so all students have access to challenging texts and meaningful writing tasks. Teachers are committed to student success. MCPS must be equally committed to teacher success. Please consider the following. More clearly articulate to teachers and families the minimum study sync in high school curriculum material that must be covered per quarter, per grade. Frequently work with teachers to evaluate how curriculum is used from class to class to inform adjustments in instruction, training, planning time, and support. Fund literacy coaches in every school to ensure curriculum implementation meets standards, rigor, and instructional expectations. Ensure all ELA teachers are provided with year-round training and proactive support to meet diverse student needs. Fund implementation of vetted external high school ELA curriculum. Rigorous curriculum benefits all students. With substantial variability from school to school and not enough time for training and support, MCPS will continue to see stagnant growth and struggle to pinpoint causes. Students will continue to bear the consequences. Thank you for your time. See my written testimony for more details.
Thank you. Edith?
I will now read Ms. Juarez's testimony in English. Good afternoon. My name is Edith Juarez, and I'm the resident of Montgomery County and the grandmother of a student in the Montgomery County Public School System. I stand before you today appalled and bewildered by Montgomery County's decision to purchase 90 new diesel buses, something that I understand is completely contradictory to our public school system's promise of electrifying its bus fleet. Electric buses not only help eliminate greenhouse gas emissions, but also protect the health and well-being of our students. MCPS is in dire need of leadership to reverse the decision to purchase new diesel buses. The facts are simple. Diesel buses pump out toxic substances that pose significant health risks, particularly to our children and our bus drivers. Furthermore, MCPS's decision will directly harm special education children with harmful toxins, which is unacceptable. But let me be clear. All students are affected by this decision. A 2020 study from the University of Utah found that third-grade students scored worse on standardized English and math tests on days with the worst air pollution. I ask you, do you really care about the academic standards of our students? I ask this because with the current decision you all have made, I see that you don't care about the students' academic performance. I urge you to cancel any contracts that would introduce new diesel buses and continue to invest in the cleanest, most responsible option for our beloved children and community: zero-tailpipe emission electric school buses. I ask you today to oppose any contract to purchase diesel school buses and remain committed to your promise of school bus electrification. The future of our environment, the health of our children, and the vitality of our communities depend on these crucial decisions. We will be looking closely at your decision. Thank you.
And that is the translation of Ms. Edith Juarez's testimony. And now, Mr. Paul Jaskus.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. My name's Paul Jaskunis. I'm a professor of writing and literature and the father of two children at MCPS schools, a junior and an eighth grader. I'm also a member of the countywide PTA curriculum committee, and I'm here today to fly the flag of literature. We have heard over the months, recent months, a lot of stories about people wanting to remove books from reading lists, to ban books. This is not good. I'm against this. I oppose the censorship. But I would say that the MCPS curriculum, by limiting what our students read, is doing more to restrict student learning than the would-be book banners. more to restrict student learning than the would-be book banners. The current high school English curriculum and the proposed ninth and 10th grade curricula share two problems. First, their reading lists are dominated by relatively contemporary U.S. literature. They exclude almost all past literary accomplishment. You will find among the core texts, no works from the medieval, neoclassical, or romantic eras, no Russian or European writing from the 19th century, almost no African, Asian, and South American literature, and astonishingly, with the exception of three titles, no American writing published before the year 1900. Among the excluded authors: Frederick Douglass, Harriet Jacobs, Emerson, Henry James, Walt Whiteman. The second thing about the curriculum that's a problem is it's ahistorical in its organization. There's no effort to, say, place the literature of the decades preceding the Civil War into a coherent unit so that students might gain an appreciation of the context in which the likes of Stowe and Whitman were writing. Rather, students are presented with a scattershot of texts, mostly recent and many below grade level. We must have diversity in the teaching of literature, but that should not require us to abandon our literary heritage.
Thank you. We received seven audio and video testimonies. The first one comes from Glenn Miller. Please play the video.
Hello, members of the Board of Education. My name is Glenn Miller. I'm an MCPS graduate, a parent of two MCPS students, and an MCPS educator. I come to you today with a growing concern that demands our immediate attention and action. The rise of antisemitism in our schools is a disturbing trend that cannot be ignored. We have a moral and educational responsibility to address this issue with urgency. I implore you to consider implementing three critical measures. First, I strongly recommend the introduction of mandatory Holocaust education in our curriculum in both middle and high school. Educating our students about the atrocities of the Holocaust is not just a historical obligation, it is a vital tool in combating prejudice and fostering empathy. Holocaust education instills the values of tolerance, diversity, and educates all of us on the consequences of unchecked hatred. Second, let us prioritize the comprehensive training for our educators that includes awareness of antisemitism and its manifestations. By equipping our educators with the tools to recognize and combat prejudice, we empower them to create inclusive and respectful learning environments. Lastly, we should establish a monitoring system, a dashboard, to track antisemitic incidents within our schools. This data will help us better understand the scope of the problem, tailor our responses, and hold those responsible accountable. By taking these steps, we are not only safeguarding our students from hate but also nurturing a culture of respect, diversity, and understanding. In doing so, we fulfill our duty as educators, and we prepare the next generation to be responsible, compassionate, and engaged citizens. I urge the Board of Education to direct the superintendent to prioritize these measures, demonstrating our unwavering commitment to combating antisemitism and promoting a more inclusive educational environment for all. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Mark Hale. Please play the video.
And my topic is parental rights. I'm testifying in reference to MCPS 4560-80, which takes the rights that naturally belong to parents away from them and gives it to the school system. Dr. McKnight and Board of Education members, we parents are responsible for the care of our children, but surprisingly do not even have the right to know a piece of information that the school system has recorded onto this form, which form was distributed by this board and is being used by the school system. This form has eroded the fundamental relationship and trust between children and their parents. We all know that well-boundled family is the building block of a good society and further strong nation, but this form will definitely undermine everything starting from the grassroots level. Please stop this conspiracy that causes adversaries and rips down families. To see an example, according to HIPAA, parents have access to the medical records of their children, but according to the above form, the school system has undermined parents' rights and banned parents from accessing a piece of information thus recorded by a person who is not even a licensed medical practitioner. The intent of concealing the information from the parents is evident from the instruction which reads, "This form should be kept in a secure confidential location." This form is filled by the school administrator, counselor, or psychologist, and you, the Board of Education members, want to hide it from parents. For God's sake, how can a piece of information be hidden from parents by a school system yet medical doctors are required by law to provide, and they do it in the system and in printouts all the time? It's just wrong to hide information from kids, about kids from their parents. This has to stop. Restore our parental rights now.
Our next video is from Minnie Vargis. Please play the video.
My name is Minnie Vargis. I'm a member of the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee, but I am submitting this testimony as a parent of a middle schooler. First, I fully support moving bell times of the high school up to 8:30 to support education. Teens are biologically programmed to fall asleep later and rise later to allow critical brain development between 6:00 and 7:30 a.m. when they need to be sleeping. Luden County moved the bell times. We should be able to do the same. Please do a study to allow later bell times. Second, due to my participation in the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee, I was shocked to discover that few books she had been assigned are actually below grade level. The enriched books are the ones at grade level. To fix this, I bought workbooks to supplement her education. I also learned from other parents in the curriculum committee that she may be missing the foundation necessary to read and then write using critical thinking. I have the means to buy books. What about all the other children? Either the parents don't know, don't have the means, or have time to put in all this after work. I am grateful there are physical books for her to read, but there are not enough books and not enough depth. Same thing for math. I requested a set of math books from the teacher so I could repeat and review the lessons at home. Reviewing the work at home brought home the fact that there isn't enough homework assigned to build rigor. Maths is about repetition until muscle memory sticks. All night math is not enough. The physical after putting pencil to paper is critical. I understand the added burden of homework on the teacher, but if MCPS isn't going to educate fully, what's the point? For higher-level math, we need workbooks. I am mystified that there are no math books after the ninth grade. In high school, I'll have to go out and research to figure out what books I should use to supplement my daughter's education. Why am I the one doing all this? What about all the other students who don't have the parents who can invest all this time and money? Please provide math books. Thank you for your submission.
Okay. Our next, we will hear from an audio testimony from Nicole Cashton.
Hi, my name is Nicole Cashton, and I am the parent of two kids at an MCPS elementary school. More importantly, though, I am Jewish and a member of the Moco Jewish Parents Coalition. Over the last month, the Jewish people have collectively experienced the worst period of time since the Holocaust. If the situation in Israel wasn't bad enough, Jews in America, including in Montgomery County, are dealing with vicious and dangerous antisemitism in person and online. Throughout this period, MCPS Central Office has provided little to no support to Jewish students, staff, and families. Given the current reality, we demand that MCPS Central Office immediately push out mandatory antisemitism training for all staff members, maintain a zero-tolerance policy for antisemitic actions committed by students and staff in line with the IHRA definition of antisemitism, and in general, give antisemitism and Jewish inclusion a similar focus to that currently given to the African-American population via the anti-racist audit. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Reagan Kelly. Please play the video.
Hello, my name is Reagan Kelly, and I'm the parent of two children in Montgomery County Public Schools. By profession, I have a background in K-8 literacy and district and state academic strategy. I'm here to speak about middle school ELA today. I don't need to point to the dismal data that fewer than half of our county's middle school students are proficient or the widening achievement gap by subgroups to this group. MCPS began the use of StudySync, a highly-rated ELA curriculum, in 2019. I'm a huge proponent of curriculum, especially in ELA, and I've seen firsthand how it can transform the student and teacher experience when done well and lead to incredible results in student achievement. We know from the Hopkins review that students were not consistently accessing grade-level content, and StudySync was meant to address this. In fact, that's the role of a strong curriculum, to raise the floor for every student and create equity and access. However, the implementation in MCPS has leveled the floor about as much as a funhouse. Absence stronger guidelines on implementation and ongoing support for teachers and leaders in both how adolescents learn to read and the alignment and the design of the program, teachers are left with endless choices and no accountability. My own son has accessed, on average, about a quarter of the content in StudySync in a year and almost, a year and a half he's been in middle school. Maybe half the modules, a handful of texts, a novel or two. As I read through the list of possible texts, I'm excited: Edgar Allan Poe, Jerry Spinelli, Mildred Taylor, but he doesn't bring those home nor access them in class. Maybe that's fine. Maybe his teacher is fantastic and doing a complex text with rigorous grade-level questions, but maybe not. Maybe not next year. Maybe not the other class across the hall or different school. We've recreated the problem from the Hopkins study that a curriculum adoption was meant to partially address: equity and access to grade-level content. I don't think StudySync is perfect. It's not even my favorite sixth- or eighth-ELA curriculum on the market, but it could be significantly better. I'd like to request a review of the implementation to see firsthand the discrepancy in access to grade-level content, as well as a robust strategy to support teachers and leaders in their use of the materials with integrity in the interim. Thank you.
Our next video testimony is from Sima Kupchan. Please play the video.
Hi, my name is Sima Kupchan, and my daughter is a sixth grader at Silver Creek Middle School. I'm here because her favorite subject in elementary school was always English, and now she regularly comes home and cries because English class is so unstimulating. I'd like to focus on three areas of concern. Number one is the use of technology in the classroom. Two is repetition in novel studies, and three is insufficient stimulation in novel studies. First, overuse of technology is a real problem in a few ways. One is computer read-alouds. My daughter's teachers often have the computer read texts aloud to the students as opposed to allowing the children to read paper texts to themselves or to each other. These are so slow that they literally bore her to tears of frustration. If the read-alouds are necessary for certain students who have trouble with reading, there must be more opportunity for advanced readers to have different classroom experience. Another problem is that most of her assignments consist of online multiple-choice reading quizzes and games rather than written analysis. I know these quizzes are tempting because they're easier to grade, but my daughter finds them frustrating because they don't allow her to do creative analysis of the texts. And needless to say, every one of these quizzes takes the place of opportunities for children to practice their writing. And finally, more broadly, there are just reams of research showing that reading texts online impairs cognitive development as compared to reading texts on the written page. Please take any money you're spending on new software programs and divert it instead to live and consistent teacher coaching. Two last points: my daughter and her peers have encountered books they've already read in fourth and fifth grades such as Shooting Stars by LeBron James. The curriculum has to be implemented to ensure that sixth grade presents more challenging and sophisticated texts than are encountered in elementary school.
Our final video testimony comes from Evelyn Chung. Please play the video.
Evelyn Chung and I are the chair of the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee. In schools throughout the county, our members are telling us that our children aren't reading enough books, aren't learning how to write, and are being taught at too low a level. And they're not wrong. Only half of our eighth graders achieved proficiency in literacy, with rates as low as 33% for Black students receiving farms and 22% for Hispanic students receiving farms. In 2018, Johns Hopkins confirmed that our curriculum does not teach grade-level standards in literacy. Johns Hopkins recommended that MCPS select a third-party curriculum vendor and focus on implementation. However, in middle school, MCPS selected StudySync, but some classes don't use it at all while others overuse it, playing canned videos instead of teaching. Some classes read only one or two novels per year while others read four. There is no consistency or cannability across schools. MCPS needs to set an equitable floor. They should conduct a robust review of middle school English, then invest in stronger year-round training and coaching to ensure consistent quality. In addition, last year's accelerator for secondary reading interventions was dropped, and pandemic tutoring also is ending. But our students still need support at the secondary level because of gaps in our elementary ELA curriculum and instruction. Finally, the English 9 pilot curriculum that you heard about today received only a score of 2 out of 4 from the state. Our experts found that content and tasks in the curriculum are at too low a level, and teachers are given too much choice. One ninth-grade class could read a graphic novel and a fourth-grade-level book, while another class could read Shakespeare and W.E.B. Du Bois. Disparities like this occur all the time, sometimes within the same school. It's time that we set a floor and switch to a vetted curriculum like Odell, Commonlit, 360, or Louisiana Guidebooks, which are all free but well-established. Our instructional specialists should focus on implementation to ensure strong and consistent instruction. As we head into operation budget planning, we urge MCPS to make substantial investments in literacy as a matter of equity. Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for public comment is Tuesday, December 5, 2023. Signups for public comment will open on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the online signups for public comment, we allow for in-person same-day signups when space allows. Unallocated slots may be filled on a first-come, first-served basis on the day of the meeting. In order to sign up in person, please arrive 15 to 20 minutes before the start of the open session and sign the form. In-person signups will close 15 minutes before public comment begins or when all slots are filled. I will now pause and see if my fellow board members have any comments or questions. Ms. Harris?
Yes, thank you to everybody who came today. We had some really interesting and thoughtful testimony, and I was particularly interested in the ELD teacher who works with Met students. And a bit troubled by that testimony as a former MCPS teacher who taught a specialized content area and experienced for myself being told how my course should operate and the parameters in which I should be instructing and never asked, even though I was the subject matter expert in that area. I know what the teacher is talking about, and I really hope we can, you know, I've been saying for three years now, please, less telling, more asking when it comes to our boots-on-the-ground educators. So if we could get a much deeper understanding of why we are mandating certain curriculum in a certain way, especially to our most challenged students, our Met populations, our students who are really struggling, and we should be doing everything possible to engage them and make them enjoy the process of learning. And it sounds like that mandating the Read 180 is not it. And I did appreciate all the constructive comment about, from the curriculum committee. It gave me a lot to think about and a lot of questions that I want to do a deeper dive on, and so I'm still kind of processing. And then just one last thing I wanted to say. You know, for months and months and months now, we have had a kind of steady drumbeat of comment here, objecting to the work we're trying to do to be a fully-inclusive and affirming school system. And I just think it is insidiously harmful to the 10% of human beings on the planet and therefore in our schools, in our classrooms, in our families, to have to listen repeatedly to them, a storybook that has a character that represents them be called "A Sexual Illusion of Perverts," or to be told that their relationships are wrong, harmful, sinful, harmful to children's physical health, social interaction, and psychology, repeatedly being told who they are, their identity, their biology is an ideology. And it beats on my soul, and I can't imagine how it beats on theirs, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera, Evelyn?
Follow up on one of her comments. I just have a question. The Met's curriculum isn't subject to the same curriculum kind of review as our other curriculums. They don't have a curriculum review committee.
So we do have a curriculum review committee, and I'll ask our chief academic officer, Dr. Pugh, to come down and talk a little bit more about how that works and how those materials are reviewed before they're put in place in our schools.
Thank you for the question. Yes, Read 180 is a curriculum material, and it has been reviewed and approved. It is, as much of what you heard tonight, inconsistently implemented, and that was the attempt to try and get us to consistently implement to determine whether or not it is an effective course for our Met students.
Thank you for that comment, but I'm not sure that it answered my question.
No, it didn't.
Can you restate your question?
My question is, we have curriculum review committees for subjects. Does the Met's curriculum have a curriculum review committee that includes people with expertise in that area?
So, yes, we have curriculum review committees that we have combined them this year and last year. They happen quarterly, and so teachers are included. Their feedback is included in looking at the curriculum. I can't say that Read 180 itself- is included in looking at the curriculum. I can't say that Read 180 itself has had that level of scrutiny or feedback, but I'm happy to talk to the teacher about what she's saying the students need.
Ms. Rivera, Ellen?
Yeah, don't go anywhere, because I want to follow you. So I was just against our high school and actually spoke extensively about the EML and the case with interrupted education. So just to get to know some numbers, cases where high school has the largest ESOL population of any high school in our district. And what I heard, I didn't get to meet you, but some of your colleagues there, is the frustration that a lot of these teachers have, and the daily struggles that they have to go through to be able to teach a population that they know how to teach, and being told not to go out of those parameters because this is the way we do it across the board. And as a former ESOL student, one of the things that I incredibly appreciate from when I was an ESOL student was the fact that my ESOL teacher and the principal of my school recognized that not every child was at that level, and they were able to challenge me and move me quickly out of ESOL to different levels. But they were able to connect with me in a culturally competent way that a lot of our students need to have that connection. Some of these students already come with so much trauma, so much personal trauma, so many challenges just to be able to go to school, that when we, in any way, shape, or form, start to have an effect on young people feeling motivated to go to school. And when we do anything to kind of kill that wanting of learning, we need to truly revise the way we do things. And it was not just against our high school, but I walk in Smell High School, at Seneca Valley, at Cluxford High School, that I heard this over and over, especially from this group of teachers. So it's heartbreaking for me to not really know the process in a sense, but not to have folks like Ms. Caroline at that table telling the system, "Listen, your way is not working with our kids." Because the more time we take to look at it, whether it's going to work or not, you have the experts, you have the boots on the ground, the people on the front lines who are telling you loudly and clearly on behalf of these students, because these students' parents cannot be here to tell you, "This is not working for my child." And then when you look at the truancy rates for these populations, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go on a rant a little bit here, but I'm really frustrated. I'm looking at the truancy rates, and there is a direct connection of feeling, you know, that wanting to be in school because you feel connected. So when you start limiting the little latitude that these teachers have to connect with these students, please know that the damage has already been done, and it's really hard to ratify. So we should be doing anything and everything in our power to ensure that these kids come motivated and come to school. And the best people who know that population are those folks who are at the front line, who see these kids every single day. They know their names, they know their stories, and they are connected. So please, let's try to level the bureaucracy a little bit less in making sure that we're doing what is best for our students, because to me, every day is precious, every year is precious. And I don't think we need to evaluate when we have the boots on the ground. And I think that frustration is across the system.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. I do remind us that we have a curriculum conversation later today, and our English Language Development Board presentation is coming up in a couple of meetings as well. So I think it was a comment, right, Ms. Rivera?
Yes, and just to learn, sorry it was so long, but just to know the process and how we can have voices like Ms. Carol to be part of that process, because, and thank you for doing the work that you do, because not only are you a teacher, but you are also an adult a lot of these kids look up to and rely emotionally on. And that can be daunting day in, day out, because we know that our kids are hurting emotionally. So thank you so much for what you do, because they cannot be here to tell us their stories, or their parents cannot be here to tell us their stories. So I appreciate you, and I think that's what I'm trying to say is, you know, that when we don't do that, our teachers do not feel appreciated, and they do not feel that they're part of the solution. So before we make decisions, we need to go to the source, we need to go to the principals, to the teachers, we need to go to the parents and say, "Is this working?" And when it's not, we need to listen. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes?
Just, I know, very quickly, I certainly appreciate all of your comments and would be happy to meet with you shortly. We do have this as a primary topic for our Labor Management Committee meeting, so we have ELD is a topic all year long, and we meet with a group of teachers that MCEA has provided us to hear some of the same concerns. So happy to have you join us, but we are looking to make changes based on a lot of the feedback from our teachers, in addition to the curriculum committees that meet every quarter. So, thank you.
All right, so now we can move on to our next agenda item, and that is Agenda Item Number Six. We have the Career Advising Blueprint, Pillar Three, and I'll give a moment for people to transition. We want to welcome our guests. Very much looking forward to this presentation. With that, I pass it on to Mr. Hull.
Wonderful. Thank you, President Sivastri. So today, we're going to hear about some enhancements that we're making to our career advising work to better support our students in their career ambitions, and this is part of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. The work is aligned with the commitment in preparing all students to be college, career, and community-ready, and will have a broad and positive impact on all of the students in Montgomery County public schools. This transformative work, it will take time, this is a multi-year plan, and the work has already begun. While career advising is a legislative mandate as part of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, it does provide Montgomery County to the flexibility to envision and plan to meet the needs of the unique students we serve. Today, our staff and community partners that are joining us at the table will share our plan to implement career advising in Montgomery County public schools. So I'll now turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Peggy Pugh.
Thank you. We're really excited to be here for work that's being done to help our students in a unique way, in a way that we haven't done prior, and in a great partnership. So if you go to the next slide, I think it's important for us to talk about how this initiative aligns with the Board's priorities, the strategic priorities of the Board, how it aligns with and is required by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and then what that collaboration looks like. So, for example, one of the pieces that is required is funding comes directly from the state, and it's a significant amount of funding that comes from the state. It comes to us specifically for this part of the requirement, to have career advising stood up in all of our secondary schools. We get to design what that looks like, and it's unique work, and it's work we haven't done before. So the requirement is that that be divided up with your Workforce Development Board and with your community college. So for us, that's Workforce Montgomery, and that is our Montgomery College. We've also been working with USG because we have so many pieces that are aligned already that we think that this partnership can really help our students. One of the other pieces is that the student growth that we're hoping to see in our individual students, in their own advocacy and ability to speak to their strengths, interests, and values, is going to help all of the metrics that are in the Board's strategic plan. Because when students can advocate for themselves, and they understand what it is they're good at, and what it is that they want to do, and what options are available to them, everything becomes relevant. The English becomes relevant, the math becomes relevant, and they have choice in the pathways that they might choose. Some of the areas that we hope to see impact long-term, immediate term would be on the immediate students with our work being done in schools this year. Long-term, we hope that this has more students being on track for graduation. It helps more students complete their post-college and career readiness pathways, and ultimately reduce any kinds of remediation needed by the time that they get to Montgomery College. Next slide, please. So in the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, we have measurable goals that align to the blueprint in Pillar Three. Pillar Three is all about college and career readiness, and our goals, specifically under the Academic Excellence Goal, talk about students meeting specifically math and English outcomes, as well as making sure that we have dual enrollment, that we have our career technical education, and what was the third one? What?
CTE, dual enrollment, AP, IB.
We've been saying it too often, our advanced programs, AP and IB, and that students have actual choice in those, and that they're prepared for those by the time that they get to high school. So another unique part that threads through this is the pathway to CCR. So NEW, the Superintendent's Pathway to College Career Readiness, along the bottom, you'll notice the Core Competencies. We've been coming before you and in the public to really report on the academic indicators that are throughout, but important to this effort also are the Core Competencies along the bottom. Those are developed specifically with USG, Montgomery County, and Montgomery College that we believe are important for students to actually gain, learn, have competency in, to be able to get a job and keep a job. And so we are purposefully and intentionally building in experiences throughout their time here at MCPS, and they're already embedded in the work that's being done at Montgomery College and USG. So it'll be a continuous pathway for them. We also believe that this is an attempt that can address some of the things that came up about belonging and about being understood as a student in our Anti-Racist Action Plan. Because if each student can really understand what their strengths are and understand what their interests and values are and can speak to them, they have an ability to develop that sense of belonging, because they can advocate for themselves, and people can have a shared vocabulary and understand. And so with that, next slide, I'll pass it to Dr. Floyd.
Good afternoon. Ms. Sivastri, Ms. Evans, Board members, Mr. Hull, and Dr. Collins. As Ms. Edwards would say, "Isn't this a beautiful day to talk about Blueprint?" We are excited to be with you and have the opportunity to share with you some information around this legislation specifically associated with career counseling. Career counseling, that's the language of the blueprint legislation, but you'll see on the slide that we have in parentheses "advising." We realized earlier on, when we were talking to our stakeholders, when we would say "counseling," they would think counselors, and this work is not their work. And so we wanted to differentiate between the two, and so the terminology we will be using is "career advising." In fact, most of the LEAs will be using similar terminology to differentiate between the two. So at a very high level, just wanted to share with you some primary points around this legislative requirements associated with the agreement, the expectation, and the goals. So Blueprint requires that we enter into an agreement. All LEAs are to enter into a memorandum of understanding with their local Workforce Development Board and with their community college. And as Dr. Pugh shared, for us, that means Worksource Montgomery and Montgomery College. And the expectation is that as a result of that partnership, that we are going to provide individualized career advising services to all secondary students, all middle and high school students. And when I'm talking to my colleagues and other LEAs, I remind them that we have over 87,000 students, that's more secondary students than some of our LEAs have students. So it's a great lift, it's a great opportunity to impact a large number of students, specifically our students. And the goal associated with this blueprint requirement is that students will be so advised, starting in grade six, that by the time they're in high school, they will be able to identify a post-CCR pathway, a post-college career readiness pathway, as shared. That means CTE, dual enrollment, AP, IB, or a combination thereof. So that's the Blueprint's goal. But when we talk about our work here in ensuring that our students are college, career, and community-ready, we know that we have to do much more. And Dr. McKnight has been clear in sharing that the blueprint is the floor, and we have to reach higher for the benefit of our students to ensure that they are indeed college, career, and community-ready. So our vision for Montgomery County Career Advising Program, we call it MOCO CAP, but short, our vision is for our students to be able to leave us and position, not only to determine what they want to pursue while in high school, but to develop lifelong career management skills that will serve them while they are with us, but also once they leave us. So this is a great opportunity. We certainly cannot do it in isolation. It requires collaboration. Next slide, please. And so we are indeed entering into a partnership with Worksource Montgomery, Montgomery College, USG, and Educators Cooperative. And I'll briefly share with you the high-level roles of each. There's a lot of work that has to be done. But Worksource Montgomery will take the lead in hiring career advising coaches that will be deployed to all of our middle and high school and special schools to serve our students, to support our staff, in building the capacity to understand this work and to support our students. They'll also be supporting us in providing exploratory opportunities for our students while they're with us. We, our role is to make sure that they have access to our students, but also to provide stipend opportunities to build the professional development of our staff. This work is not going to happen, and you're going to hear more about this work momentarily, what it looks like, what it sounds like. And it's great work, and it's not going to happen because we have one career advising coach in a school. It's going to take the collective. And in order for the collective to serve us and to serve our students well, they need to be informed. So professional development is critical, it is key. So we will be providing stipends to our educators, our school-based staff, to build champions of this work, so they can support the rollout, support the implementation, and speak to what it is that we are doing and support us in this effort. We will also infuse this into our core curriculum, so it's a part of our culture, what we do and what we teach and what we provide for our student. In fact, we had a session with our content specialists yesterday and supervisors, and they were excited. And I certainly hope at the end of this session, you too will be excited once you hear more about the work we plan to do. Another part of our role is to make sure it aligns with those priorities that Dr. Pugh talked about, and we will certainly do that. Professional development, I shared with you, was very important, and so we are fortunate to have one of the premier institutions in the country as our community's college. So Montgomery College will support us in the professional development of our career advising coaches, our career advising team, and they will support us through the credentialing, if you will, of our staff, so they are knowledgeable, they are formed, and they are ready to serve our students, to help our staff. Although not signatures on the MOU, we also believed it was important and wise to partner with universities at Shady Grove. They have been extremely supportive of us and worked collaboratively with us in a variety of programs, activities, projects, and initiatives, but certainly in the ones mentioned by Dr. Pugh as it related to the competencies that we have. They're a part of our college career community readiness pathway. So they will be providing professional development to the career advising team in that area to make sure the competencies that are important for our students to know and understand are infused in our work. So we're thrilled and excited that they are joining us in this effort. And finally, and I do want to give credit to Mr. Featherstone, whom you will meet shortly, there was an understanding that we needed experts in this area. We needed to find out who was doing this work well, who was being effective, and had a proven track record of success. And so they did an RFP, Worksource Montgomery did an RFP, and found Educators Cooperative. And we're so excited to have them on board. They're, in fact, here in the room, and you will hear from them. And they are the consultants to us on this work. They will help us in the design of this plan, deploying, the implementation, the revising, to make sure that we stand this work up well and that we are effective in what we do. So we're excited, and I'm delighted, that joining us at the table, and you, next slide, please. I just talk and I sometimes... I just talk, and I sometimes... Next slide, please. Oh, I'm excited to have joining us at the table. I'll present to some, perhaps introduce to others. First, Mr. Anthony Featherstone, who is the Executive Director of WorkSource Montgomery and the Local Workforce Development Board. Many of you already know. Joining him from WorkSource Montgomery is Mr. John Hattery, who is the Deputy Director from WorkSource Montgomery. He serves as the Deputy Director of Career Education Services. And finally, delighted to have joining us at the table Dr. Steve Rigor, who is the CEO of Educators Cooperative. And I must also add, in the audience is Ed Hodago, who is fabulous in so many ways. Both of them are. Mr. Hodago is not only a consultant as part of the team, but he formerly was the Chief Innovation and Engagement Officer in California, a district in California where he led and stood up this work, and have had some great results. So, we are fortunate to have the consultants that we have and delighted to have them at the table. I now present to you Mr. Featherstone.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Floyd, and good afternoon to all of the Board members. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about this really exciting initiative today. If we can go to the next slide. Before we get into the work, I want to talk to you just a little bit about who we are as an organization. You'll hear Workforce Development Board in the legislation and WorkSource Montgomery a lot today. They're really synonymous. The county's Workforce Development Board is a 34-member body appointed by the county executive that's tasked with designing what the public workforce system should look like, how it should operate, who it should serve, and what the outcome should be. And WorkSource Montgomery serves as the fiscal agent and staff arm for the Workforce Development Board. What you see on the slide in front of you are the board's six priorities. Everything and anything we do fits in one of these buckets, whether it's community engagement, how are we sending information to the community and bringing information back about how effective our services are? What are we doing with local businesses to understand what their needs are today and tomorrow? Talent pipeline development, what are we doing about those needs? How are we preparing our current and future workforce to meet the needs of our businesses? System building. We have, and we'll talk about this in a few moments, one of the most robust workforce ecosystems that I've ever seen in my workforce career. And one of our priorities is to make sure that we bring the ecosystem together, to make sure that we leverage the synergies wherever they can be leveraged at. And one new one, I won't bore you with the WIWA priority. That's a federal legislation for another conversation for another time. But a new priority for our board this year is career education. That's the career advising program that we're going to talk about today. And I can tell you, on behalf of our organization, our WorkSource Montgomery Board of Directors and our Workforce Development Board, we're all excited about this work. Typically, the residents that we serve, we're trying to do this work, I think, in a reactive manner. They're a lot older than the students that we'll be working with. And as we peel the layers back and we work with these individuals, you see that at a certain point in time, different for everybody that we serve, a program like this as an additional resource could have helped them out and maybe prevented them from getting to a point where they're with their local workforce development board, trying to overcome a level of barriers so that they can be economically mobile. And so, we're excited about this new priority called career education manifested through the MOCO CAP program. Next slide. So, a little more about WorkSource Montgomery and really all of the local workforce development boards across the state. You know, it's going to take a village to make this work. And a village includes, of course, all the partners that Dr. Floyd just ran through. But we think it's going to take the village of our workforce ecosystem to really make sure that this program is successful. And so, I think our unique position as a workforce board will bode well in making sure that we can leverage partnerships wherever they should be leveraged to make sure this program is successful, whether it's working with the chambers in which we have a variety of different chambers here in Montgomery County, bringing in Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation when it comes to also engaging businesses. Our extremely robust nonprofit community that provide a lot of support services that can play into some of the needs of the families that will essentially be engaging, that these students are a part of. And so, it's a vast, it's a robust workforce ecosystem. And we plan to ensure that we bring all of our partners to the table as we continue to grow and make this program as effective as it can be. Next slide. So, talking about money now. This is the budget for the program. The blueprint created a formula which was $62 per pupil based on total enrollment to fund this career counseling program. In Montgomery County, to nobody's surprise, of course, I'm sure, we have the largest allocation because we are the largest school system in the state of Maryland. And so, $9.71 million is the total allocation for this program. You'll see the split between all four organizations, MCPS, WorkSource Montgomery, Montgomery College, and the universities at Shady Grove. WorkSource Montgomery is allocated 6.3 million of the 9.71 million. I think similar to MCPS, the majority of that budget is devoted to program expenditures, primarily to personnel, career coaches that are going to be in the schools, working with your staff, and working with the students to deploy this program. And so, that's the split. We also, as Dr. Floyd mentioned, that we'll be working with the universities at Shady Grove to provide training on the nine competencies. There's funding allocated for the universities at Shady Grove as well. And so, with that, I'm going to pause. So, now we can start talking about the work. And I'll say next slide and hand it off to my colleague, John Hattery.
Good afternoon. It's good to be with you. How about I do this?
You go.
Good afternoon. It's good to be with you. My name's John Hattery. Traditionally, and this is a generalization, despite all the wonderful CTE programs in Montgomery County Public Schools, despite the IB, despite the apprenticeships, the externships, and all the opportunities that you work very hard and your staffs work very hard to put on the ground, too often, young people get some education, and they get some more education, and then they get done with what they think they're done, their education, and then they have to figure out what they want to be when they grow up. And they don't know. And they're starting almost from zero with a diploma and maybe a degree, and they don't know what's next for them, what's right for them. And so, our goal here is to try to integrate that, to have young people become aware of themselves. You've already heard Dr. Pugh talk about strengths, interests, and values. We're going to layer in a thing called the RIASEC, which Dr. Rigor is going to talk to you about in a little while, but all with the goal to integrate a language into the schools whereby young people, teachers, counselors, families, now have a base, a foundation, to talk about what they want to be when they grow up, based on what they're good at, based on what they're interested in, based off the languages that we teach them, and on top of that, the experiences that WorkSource Montgomery, through our business-facing team, is going to provide to young people. So, not only do they get the opportunity to learn about themselves, think about some things that might be interesting to them, but when we're going to give them the opportunity to interact with professionals, with industries, with employers, and be able to learn more about it. I think at this point, the next best thing to do would be to pass it to Dr. Rigor and go to the next slide.
Thank you. Thank you, Boyd, for your time. Appreciate this. Before I get started with my piece of the puzzle, I do want to compliment the leadership. Everyone I've worked with so far in the district, outstanding. Everyone here is committed to this work. There's a true collaboration. All the partners from Montgomery County to universities at Shady Grove, everyone's committed to making this work. And so, what's interesting about this initiative is as much as we know about what best practices are, which I'm happy to share with you, what's often missing in communities is the integration or the alignment of resources. And so, what we have here is an opportunity for very strong organizations to come together under a common language or a common methodology. And so, I'm going to talk real quickly through some of the key elements about what's kind of in the research. One of the ideas behind personalized career advising is that an individual understands their own vocational identity or occupational identity. This is often expressed, and we can use words like strengths, interests, and values because it's easy to wrap your mind around. But essentially, we want like young people early on to claim and name their own vocational identity. How do they see themselves in this world? How do they see themselves navigating this world? What are their options? Where would they go to pursue those options? Who are their role models? Who would they go to talk to to learn more? And so, that's the beginning of what this work is really about. So, this idea of career advising as a verb, career advising as a conversation. So, it's not an event. It's not a moment on the calendar. It's a way. It's a style, if you will. So, that requires common career language. Now, it's always been hinted that phrases like strengths, interests, and workplace values. This concept of a RIASEC or the Holland Themes as a universal, recognized by the Department of Labor, used across occupational settings, a way to not only to self-discover and self-describe, but as a way to map opportunity. There are words that can be used to describe opportunity and option. There's words that can be used to describe personal interest profile. How do I see myself? How do I see my opportunities? So, this matching comes through a common career language. And as MC, USG, MCPS, and WorkSource Montgomery start together sharing and teaching and using that common language, that's really the conditions of vocational identity or occupational identity, where people start to see where they might fit, person-environment fit, where might be a good place where I would thrive. That requires student-driven tools, tools made for kids, sometimes by kids. We're actually asking each school site to have a student advisory board, a career group that comes together and talks about what's working. How does this look and feel from a kid's point of view? Am I getting the advice I need? Am I getting access to the information I need access to? That means classroom connections. That means it cannot happen in isolation. It can't be a one-off conversation. That means we're looking for intersection points. It's not a new thing. You have teachers today talking about careers in classrooms. The question is, are we using a common language? Are we connecting the dots? Are we highlighting it? Are we helping schools become places that are career curious? Are people looking around saying, what are my options? Where would I go? Who would I talk to? Students are making decisions every year at registration. They're deciding which clubs, which electives, before school, after school, within school. They're making career decisions every year. Are we framing it and helping them reframe it and helping them think about their trajectory? So, that leads to career experiences and opportunities for hands-on career exposure. So, that's where WorkSource Montgomery leverages an entire landscape of employable opportunities. And having the MC, USG, MCPS, and WS in alignment is going to maximize the resources for kids. So, the main concept here is career advising as a conversation that's ongoing through common language with as many intersection points as possible. It's not a one-off. It's not another thing. It's not a moment on the calendar. Next slide, please. So, as we think about how to deploy, when you look at what the different typologies are, what are the different methodologies, what are the different frameworks? How do we go farthest fastest? The RIASEC provides a common language. It's six words. Without getting into the details of it, it's recognized by the Department of Labor. It's used as a national and international vocabulary for career. It's a way of describing self. It's a way of describing opportunity. So, it's a language that opens up realistic, investigative, artistic, social, enterprising, and conventional workplace opportunities. As students and teachers, educators, counselors, career advisors, families, and businesses engage in this common career language, it allows people to understand how person-environment fit comes together in the workplace. Next slide. How do you use that vocabulary? You use it through a process of conversation. And we've boiled this down to four simple questions. How do you see yourself right now? Who are you today? Strengths, interests, and values. Where are you at? Where are you starting from? The second kind of phase, how are you growing? How are you developing knowledge and skills? The third phase, right now, today, what do you think your options are? Because if you don't think you have options, you're not really making decisions. And if the first time you have to make an actual decision is when you're 18 and you graduate, as John just mentioned, you haven't exercised your decision-making muscle. So, you may not be ready to make real-life decisions. So, along the way, we have to have people understanding options, weighing options, and making choices. And ultimately, where are you headed? What kind of lifestyle are you interested in? What are your workplace values? Travel, local, flexibility? What are you looking for? See, this cycle of conversation can happen at 12, and it could happen at 52. That is career management. That is career development. It's not a one-off job attainment. So, what we're talking about in this initiative, MOCO CAP, is helping empower kids and families on how to have career conversations in the first place, giving them a process, giving them vocabulary. Next slide. That means, as already indicated by Mr. Featherstone, excuse me. Anthony. We're on a first-name basis. We spend a lot of time together as a team. It takes a village. All right. We all are going to have roles in this. You already have outstanding educators doing outstanding work. You have teachers today having great conversations around career. What we're going to do is help create career-curious schools where people are intentionally looking for connection points. We're going to expand career exploration opportunities. We're going to help develop a common language so these threads come together across institutions and across the timeline. There are many people in the schoolhouse already doing fantastic work. This is not belittling new work. This is also not supplanting work, and this is not replacing work. This is amplifying best practice. Next slide.
So, as we operationalize this work, there are a number of milestones that we are in the process of achieving. The first was, hey, we need some career advising coaches. They started, the first cohort of 33 started on October 10th. They have been involved in training delivered by Educators Cooperative and Montgomery College since then, and Montgomery County Public Schools. As we, because we knew we were doing an innovative program model, we knew that we needed a creative professional development program. And as we were sitting down and the folks in the planning group were thinking, we knew that we wanted to make sure that we were creating competencies that could be identified in our career advising coaches. We knew that they needed to sit and hear about best practices and other elements of delivering this work to make them the most effective career advising coaches they could be. And partway through that process, we realized we were building an apprenticeship program, an apprenticeship program where people earn and learn and advance their skills with a combination of on-the-job training and related training. And so, as we were building it and understanding that we were building an apprenticeship program, something that workforce boards support all the time, we thought, what the heck? Why don't we go ahead and make it a registered apprenticeship program? And so, we did that. Our program, our career advisors, our career advising coaches are now registered apprentices with the U.S. Department of Labor, and they are going to receive not only the certification from Montgomery College as they complete their training, but also a journey-level certificate from the U.S. Department of Labor. That's a portable credential that is recognized nationwide. Other milestones is starting the really deep and important work around engaging community. I'll ask you to remember that slide a few slides ago of the dots with WorkSource Montgomery in the middle and then all the dots and around. And that included folks like businesses and employers, and that included Montgomery County Public Schools and Montgomery College and higher education. And importantly, it also included community-based organizations. We're the connective tissue. WorkSource Montgomery is the connective tissue around many of those organizations. We bring them together and fund many of their efforts. And in that, we work with them consistently and constantly to make sure that we're tailoring our programming in a way that makes sense for the communities in which we work. And that's a process that's going to be prominent as we stand up this work inside Montgomery County Public Schools. We're going to leverage those relationships, as well as the student advisory groups, as well as the contact with experts in the field, your educators, your principals, your leaders, and other groups to help inform this work, tweak this work, improve this work as we put it together for the long term. We joined the school community on Monday. Monday. Our career advising coaches are deploying on Monday. They'll be there primarily to build relationships, start understanding the rhythms of the school, start... start, you know, setting up their offices and all those mundane things, but most importantly, beginning that important process of relationship-building with educators, leaders, and young people. And then last on this list, but certainly not last on all the lists in my tablet, is we'll start delivering services, actively delivering services in January, just after the winter break. And that's when young, that's when career advising coaches, with the support of the champions, with the support of the cluster leads, with the support of the leadership, are going to start having these conversations on a daily basis to, so young people are starting to integrate this language, they understand this language, they learn it, and they can start talking about what's next for them when they decide what's next for them. If that may be when they're making a decision about a CTE program when they're in eighth or ninth grade, or if that's, you know, doing an internship or an apprenticeship when they're in 10th or 11th grade, or if that's what college they want to go to when they graduate. They'll have that language and be prepared to make all those decisions at all those important inflection points based on these milestones and a whole lot of others that are to come. Next slide, please. So I mentioned a moment ago around our family engagement plan. So one of the things that we are, we're very proud of the fact that we have so many languages represented amongst the current first cohort of career advising coaches. Let me take a step back. We are hiring a total of 48 or 49 coaches, we've hired 33 now. Worksource Montgomery, you know, we are not the biggest organization at the table, and so we needed to do this in a phased approach from a recruitment standpoint. There was also, at least at some, we were thinking there was some wisdom in, let's do the first cohort, let's get the first set of training going, and then let's do some targeted, let's figure out where our gaps are from a personnel standpoint, and then do targeted recruitment in our next recruitment, which will begin just after the first of the year. Those coaches will start just in early February, they'll be deployed in the schools sometime in mid-March. But in the meantime, we have 15 languages represented right now, we have an incredibly diverse group of career advising coaches with, you know, with diversity of experience and perspective and all the wonderful ways that that word can be used. We are also going to deploy a translation tool. We know that even despite having folks, many folks that speak many different languages, that at some point, someone, one of our career advising coaches who speaks Spanish is going to run into somebody who speaks Amharic, right? So what do you do about that, right? We've discovered, you know, we went to the market and did a lot of research, and we discovered a tool that we're going to deploy with each one of our coaches that in real-time allows people to converse. So it's not the clunky kind of Google Translate thing where you have to wait and show each other the phone and all that kind of fun stuff. It's a much more real-time tool that allows for real exchange of ideas and information and the like. We talked about parent-teachers, we're also going to have some virtual nights, we have a website, it's still under construction, it's going to be under construction for the full length of the time that we're doing this program, that we will always be adding things. It's part community of practice for educators, it's part information tool for families, it's part community outreach tool. And it's called MOCO CAP, you can find it on the web today. And as I mentioned earlier, and importantly, as we build this, as we stand it up, we are going to, as we do with all of our programming at Worksource Montgomery, engage in a process of evaluation and improvement. And that doesn't mean we stand around and look at each other and say, hey, we're doing a great job. That means we bring in other folks and experts who are going to help us and give us feedback because that's the only way you grow. And so that encompasses, in a nutshell form, the beginnings of our family engagement plan. Next slide, please.
We've shared a lot with you today at a high level, but I hope it was enough to leave you with some key takeaways of what we want to leave you with. First of all, this is work that's going beyond the expectations and the requirements of blueprint legislation to really serve our students and to serve them well. It's a multi-layered approach, it's not going to happen in one year, it's not going to happen in two years, but we really have to roll this out, roll it out well, and make revisions as needed in order to perfect what we have for our students. It certainly requires professional development. And so we're investing in that, and we're taking time for that to make sure all of our staff have ownership in our part of this plan that we're rolling out. It relies heavily on research, research best practices that have been proven to be effective practices, to not only position our students well, again, while they're with us, but to empower them to do great things when they leave us. Next slide, we certainly are delighted to have more discussions with you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to our partners for being and joining us here today. I also want to recognize Steve Greenfield, Vice President and Provost for Montgomery College Workforce Development, thank you for joining us. I wanted to start out the questions and discussion, asking you to help paint the picture of what the service looks like for an individual student. So I'm Carla Silvestri, ninth grader at Blake High School. What am I going to experience, let's say ninth grade, just so that we have an idea of what the student experience will look like? I don't know who can take that.
Thank you for that question, because I think at the end of the day, that's what we really want to know, what does it, what does it look and feel like in the real world? It will have a different flavor on, at different school sites, there will be different school cultures, and there'll be different timelines of implementation. If I can be blunt about what this looks like in our work, having scaled this across different districts and different states, depending on how collaborative the staff is, the integration will move as quickly as the school community is ready to move. What this looks like from a student's point of view in the pie-in-the-sky, rainbows-and-unicorns implementation is that there's a career advisor with office hours or open moments where they can sign up and go to. There are moments where that student feels specifically targeted, heard, pulled aside, or in small group to have a conversation. The student has experiences in the classroom across content areas where teachers are talking about, and here's how you use my content, and here's who gets paid if you are interested in what we're talking about. And what have you learned about yourself based on this unit? And what do you know, having now completed this project? So the teachers, the career advisors, the CCICs, the career counselors, and other community members are having conversations on a regular basis. The student also has on his calendar a trip to go into a workplace experience. The student knows, here are the big decisions you're going to have to make, registration is coming in two months, here are your options, here are the three things. What are your strengths, interests, and values? Which of these things align to those strengths, interests, and values? So it's a decision-making consultation model, not a one-off service model, meaning it's not a time on the calendar, it's an integrated implementation. Now, in the real world, what does that look like from a kid's point of view? From a kid's point of view, it looks like ongoing, regular conversations about how I see myself, strengths, interests, and values in a career trajectory. I'm trying to translate, in the real world, it means that I have career conversations on a regular basis. It's not only when I interact with my career advisor. It is something I'm seeing in my classrooms, it's something I'm having when I have my time with my career advisor, it's something I have when I talk to my career counselor, and it's something I'm having at home with friends and family, because my family is also getting that information, and they have prompts to use for conversations with me as well. And then I'm, as a student, also going to events, I'm Zooming with industry experts, I'm having industry chats as part of my content connection. So there's in the school hours, as well as opportunities outside of the school hours.
And how do you know you're reaching all of the students, in particular, those that need it the most?
So I don't know if you want me to pivot to some of your in-house metrics? Okay. So there's a couple of layers to how to monitor this. Some of the work we're doing, coordinating with AIB and Maryland Workforce Association to try to identify what are the indicators and benchmarks along the way. As blueprint indicators come out from the state and get clearer, then what are the interim assessments? That's kind of a, to be determined from a guidance. From a implementation point of view, and Worksource will talk about how they're monitoring and measuring, how they're deploying the career advisors, what I would say is, in the short answer, each school site will need to, well, not need to, each school site will engage with their own current systems of support for students. Meaning, there are ways in which, right now, today, your schools are making sure kids have the registration information they need, understand what clubs are available, have communications about grades and report cards. There are checkpoints on the calendar where your schools are interacting with kids about decisions they need to make and registering for those decisions. So we want to capture how many kids feel comfortable and have the information they need. So what does that look like? It looks like surveys, it looks like small group interactions, it looks like site visits when we're talking with admin and leaders. I also want to echo the student advisory group and the idea that that group meets regularly and will be essentially a customer service, how's it going from a kid's point of view? So those conversations are ongoing, it's not a one-time thing. Now, more formal qualitative and quantitative metrics, I'll kick back to Worksource.
One more time. Hit the mic one more time. Can we turn off some lights, please? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. We have not received the specific metrics that are going to be measured by the state. Steve started his response with that, but I'm going to reinforce it. However, Worksource Montgomery, in partnership with MCPS and others, are looking at ways to be sure that we can measure impact, right? And so we, our data person at Worksource Montgomery is beginning to build a system where we are, we are going to do just that. It's the qualitative stuff, right? How many did we do? How many young people did we talk to? Did we get to everybody in the school? Did we get to everybody in this first year in sixth and ninth grade, which is our deployment plan? In this first year, when we go into January, our goal is to get to as many sixth graders and ninth graders as we can through all the different touchpoints that Steve mentioned. And then we're going to have to, we have some qualitative measures to see, well, okay, we talked to them, and they went on this field trip, and they have this stuff, but did they, did any, do they know their RIASEC themes? Do they know how those RIASEC themes connect to a job zone? Do they know how those RIASEC themes connect to a job zone, would then connect to an occupation? Did they have an opportunity to interact with the industry or the professional? So those kinds of qualitative measures are going to be an important part of it. We also have a management team, so we, you know, we have, we have our career advising team. We split the county up into five geographic zones and another non-geographic zone, manager in charge of each one, and part of what they are going to be tasked to do is to make sure we're getting to everybody, including the folks that need it the most, for whatever that definition is. And regular reporting up the line, and that we're going to pass along to Montgomery County Public Schools, and we're going to, again, get feedback. And the other piece of it that's important to note is that we just completed 42 out of 46 kickoff meetings at the schools around, around the county. And universally welcomed into the communities, and universally tasked and committed to communicating with student, with school leaders, student leaders, and other educators. And that important piece of communication, to make sure that we're touching all the, all the various corners of the school, to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to get to as many young people as we can, in concert with our champions that Dr. Floyd mentioned, and the cluster leads, and the other leaders in the schools, to make sure that every young person in sixth and ninth grade this first year understands RIASEC, understands when people say RIASEC what that means, and has some idea of their strengths, interests, and values as it relates to a workplace opportunity.
Thank you.
I want to just add something, because when you asked that question, I thought about all of our students, because the legislation expects us to serve all of our students, our most vulnerable students, our medically fragile students, all of our students, no exceptions, no excuses, no alibis. So this is work that we have to do, and I just want to emphasize the fact that we have to have champions in our building and leverage what was mentioned earlier about the expertise that already exists and the connections that they have with their students and with our families. And that's why professional development is so important. When we're talking about champions, I just want to put this in a little bit more context. Every school, every middle school, every high school, every special school will have champions of this work. So envision a high school with 10 champions, math, science, English, social studies, and other content areas, in addition to our special education, our counselors, and our EML population. So if they have champions, they will be provided professional development opportunities to really understand and learn this work, and they will champion and help us to provide information and professional development to their colleagues, who will share with their colleagues. We will have student advisory groups. This work will require our hands on deck to reach the thousands of students that we must reach. And it's supportive, it's great to have a coach, but it definitely requires all of us to understand this work and to work together to make this happen. And then to measure, how are we doing this? And we can't only rely on the quantitative, because it's important to get that student voice, that qualitative is extremely important, and it's our hope. And I hope Dr. Edison doesn't leave the room, but in evaluation plan, that we will be able to get that kind of information from our students. Our students should leave us knowing, being able to answer those questions Dr. Rieger spoke about. What are my interests, strengths, and values? They should know that. How am I improving my skills? What are my options? And most importantly, as you've mentioned before, Ms. Silvestri, what are my plans for my future? What are my goals and priorities? They should not leave us needing a gap year because they don't know what they're going to do. A gap year with intention has its purpose, but a gap year with no purpose is problematic. And so we really have to make sure that we do what we can to make sure that we are providing professional development for the collective, so that we can make sure that no child is missed, that all students are served.
No, as I've told you previously, this is a dream come true for me. I have been talking about having a post-high school plan for every student, and I hope that we can get to that through this initiative. And I look forward to seeing how we are going to serve all students, as you say. Thank you. I have more questions, but I will yield to my colleagues so that we can get through everyone's questions. Ms. Yang.
Hi, thank you, thank you. Of course, being the former CCIC, I see this as tremendous work, and I, if a partnership works well, it should bring very added value to our students' experience. Now, I have some, more like a comment. I understand you mention champions with stipends that's in our school buildings, but as I understand that, are these staff members who have a lesser regular low to take on this job, or are they doing their regular low to take on this champion role?
The champions have a regular job, and then this is an opportunity for them to earn a stipend, to infuse some, for example, and Dr. Rieger could probably share more about what they might do, but in part of the professional development that will be provided, they will learn how to infuse some of the activities into their session to engage students. I was a former math teacher. Students will often say, how am I going to use this? And if they have the language of RIASEC that Dr. Rieger spoke about, teachers can easily give students the voice to share and to imagine how they might use this or not. And that's fine, too, but it will be a stipend position for them.
So they are not providing one-on-one advising, but integrating the career aspect into their curriculum?
The champions.
Okay, okay, so that, thank you for that clarification. Now, the second thing is, we're talking about evaluation, metric evaluation. Often, sitting here, we get numbers of how many students have sought the service. Often, sitting here, we get numbers of how many students have sought the service, you know, but for me, that is not as valuable as I say, how many more times did we see the students? Was it just one-time touch point, right? And what is the length of our conversation? The students can come, say, hey, Ms. Yang, do you have a list of internship? I passed a paper. Phew, done. But do we, what's the length? What conversation we have? And that, to me, is more valuable than just say, how many students had a touch point, but, but, you know, the length, and do we have repeat visits to, to see this advisor? Okay. And another point is, can you share a little bit, question is, about, you, you have 48, we have, so how are these advisors going to be distributed throughout the county?
There will be a career coach in every high school, or career advising coach in every high school, and there will be a career advising coach assigned to, to two middle schools. So each coach will have two middle schools. And then we have, we have a career advising coach that is assigned to the special schools.
Thank you. I will let my colleagues ask.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for the presentation. This is really important and starting early is what many of us have been talking about for many years with career readiness. But I do have a few questions about implementation and going through your one-year milestones that I have a few questions on. One of them is, you heard how diverse our community is, so we have, I'll use cases for high schools as an example, so they have a high special education group of kids, they have a high EML group of kids. Seems to me that there really needs to be a plan for each of those groups, rather than having one glove fit all, because the reality is that the situations you're going to encounter at cases for high school are going to be very different than the ones at, like a Walter Johnson High School, because of the makeup and the needs of that school. So for me, I'm, I am interested to know, to look at your plan of engagement, not just with the students or with the champions, because I think we have many champions in school who are already part of this, but most importantly, with the parents. And what does it look like, as Ms. Silvestri said, for, for Sophia, who is a fashion generation, who is, you know, newly arrived, who might be a DACA student? What does that look like versus somebody who was born and raised here and is, you know, their family has been here for a long time? And for me, that is really important because when we look at numbers, that tells me, you know, are we really getting to some of the kids that we need to get to? And then how are we capturing that data? And seeing here that you already started community stakeholder engagement, I want to know how, what is it that you're doing to have that engagement with these different populations currently? What does that look like? Is it just posting stuff online? Because that's going to be a problem, I can tell you. So, and the 33 coaches that you have so far, the kind of training that they get when dealing with these different types of populations, and the knowledge that they need to have when dealing with these, with these different kinds of groups?
So I, I think those are great questions. I heard a few questions. Number one, a one-size-fits-all model, I agree, can't work, won't work, is not very equitable as a recipe for a lot of students, slipping through the cracks in that being served. And so it is one piece of legislation, it is one program, it is one, one goal to make sure that students have agency over, you know, what their career pathway is through teaching these career management skills. But as we deploy our career advising coaches into the schools, there's not a one-size-all fit, fit framework. It's more so, as John mentioned, each career advising coach is going into the schools is first developing a relationship with the principals, understanding kind of the interworkings of the school. Some schools may have, you know, certain things going on that others, others don't. And so their first task, and I think probably one of their most important tasks, is to, to, to fact find and take an inventory and learn the student population, to figure out how this model will be implemented in every school. I, I really think that it, there is a potential, that the outcome could be the same, but the means towards that outcome could look 68-plus different ways once it's done. And that's probably what it should look like if this program is, is successful. I think your next question was very important as well about how, how are we engaging communities? And so over the past year, we, we've spent, I think, at least one meeting a week together. I've missed some of those meetings, but I'm trying to plan this, this program out. And so the community engagement strategy is going to, to evolve. We've had a variety of different community engagement meetings where we do an overview of what this program entails and what it's working towards, and we've gotten some really constructive and critical questions and feedback that kind of, you know, makes us, you know, think critically about what we're doing, and is it really the, the right model going in and right will, will evolve over time. And so that's a part of our community impact strategy for our core business pre, pre-blueprint is to be in a community every day, interfacing with faith-based, community-based, you know, stakeholders, you know, up, down, left, right, through, throughout the community to, to get information on our, our services and feedback. You'll get the qualitative reports, we'll get the quantitative reports as well, but there's some anecdotes I think that we're going to have to consider. I don't know if it'll hold weight at the state level, but as this program deploys, as we do the community meetings, as all of our organizations do, we're going to start to hear from the community about, well, I have children at MCPS and I haven't heard your name, I haven't heard about this program, or maybe I have and, and I have thoughts and feedback and perspective, or maybe it's, it's, it's going great, my child has received those services. And so I think one thing that we're always going to consider is the anecdotes that we, that we hear from, from the community when we engage in these different meetings. One of the other things that's under development is our MOCO CAP Ambassador Program. And so there, there are, I, I, you know, I believe there are probably a lot of families who don't make every PTA meeting. There, I'm pretty sure a lot of families that don't check WorkSource Montgomery's social media, that won't check the website, not because they don't want to, but they may not be aware of it. But we believe in credible messengers, and so there are a lot of different nonprofit organizations that have a finger on the pulse of certain communities that, quite frankly, we don't. And that's been our strategy from day one, is to figure out who those credible messengers are, develop an ambassador program, and so that we all can be singing from one song sheet as we, we, we work with our, our mutual customers, whether they're students or clients in a workforce program, they're all Montgomery County residents who may have children at MCPS. And so that's a program I, I, I quite honestly think is going to be the most effective, is working with, with nonprofits, but that's a program that's, that's under development. So I, there may have been a third question, Ms. Rivera, and remind me because I forgot it itself.
No, the third question was, if, if you could share with, with us a copy of your, of your plan, your, your stakeholder plan, your implementation plan during this, this period, that would be, I think, at least for me and maybe my colleagues, but I'm, I'm personally interested in it. And the last question I had for you is, how are we going to be engaging our summer rise students with you guys? Because that's already a population that is, you know, that is very interested in career-oriented, but they still need the support because they still, a little bit, they don't know what to do. I mean, they, you know, and a lot of them, again, they're the first to go either, you know, to graduate or to go to college, and also with our dual language, or dual enrollment that we do.
Well, I, I think, I, I think there's a lot of overlap with, with Summer Rise, and I, you know, we, we are a partner of Summer Rise already in, you know, helping with business recruitment and stipends and so forth. I think what you will see is that students will come to the Office of Partnerships with probably more science or a clearer vision behind what type of Summer Rise experience that they want to engage in. I think that there's a possibility that there could be an influx or an increase in Summer Rise applications for, for students who learn their strengths, interests, values, you know, they know the world of work that, that could be fulfilling for them, and they want to try it hands-on. And so it's a conversation that we've had with MCPS about, you know, increasing numbers and expanding year over year. And so I, I think that's what you'll see, students having a clear vision or ask for their Summer Rise placement and, and more students. And so I think that's going to be a challenge to, to figure out how we can accept more than are rejected.
If I might, if I might add, the career advising coaches are 12-month employees, and so they are, they're going to be available to be integrated in that programs like Summer Rise. We haven't had the specific conversation about what that looks like, but certainly it's on our list of things that we know that we're going to be a part of, because WorkSource Montgomery is, is, as Anthony mentioned, so embedded and, and involved with Summer Rise. So that's, that's a, that's a piece that we know is coming.
My apologies, Ms. Wolf, I just want to quickly add, when we look at this vision long-term, we're starting with sixth graders, and I can only imagine how well-positioned they're going to be once they are in a, in a space where they can decide to do Summer Rise or dual enrollment or the other ones, because those are jointly for the 10th and the, I mean, the 11th, 12th graders. So once we roll this out and they get to that point, as Mr. Featherstone said, not only do I anticipate we'll have more students in Summer Rise and dual enrollment, but just the clarity that they'll bring to the employees, to their vision and what they want to do in the future, so, Ms. Wolf.
I'm very excited for this program because I've actually seen it in action. I was in California, met Mr. Delgado, love him, and I am so pleased to see him because we actually saw this program in operation at an elementary school. An elementary school that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, was 100% farms. I believe one of the student, I distinctly remember a fifth-grade student, and I remember her saying, when she came to this country, she didn't speak any English. And she was telling us all about her strengths. I do think it's important that people understand that it is not one strength, that there are several strengths that have been identified. And I think that's very important because when, when people hear this, they're going to think, well, what, what does a fifth grader know about one thing? But the other thing that was so amazing about this is that they had not only identified their strengths, they had identified careers that matched their strengths, they had been, they had done research on those careers, and when you went in the school library, the library identified who employs people with those kinds of strengths, which I thought was amazing. But the one thing I think that, that I saw there that I'm, that I'm looking for the buy-in here is it wasn't just a coach that was doing it, the school bought into the idea, the teachers were using this to help the students learn, too. It was amazing. It, it just absolutely was amazing. And I remember saying to Mr. Delgado, then, do you want to come work in Montgomery County? I guess you decided not to. But I, I'm very excited for this, and I'm looking, I'm hoping to see the same kind of enthusiasm in our buildings that I saw in that school, because what you saw, and I, I think it was you, Anthony, that said, are they all singing from the same song sheet? And out there, they were all singing from the same song sheet. Because I got to tell you a story, I have a degree in math, and the day I graduated from college, I was like, what am I going to do with this? Because I'd never really given any thought to it beforehand. So I think that this is an amazing opportunity. And the other thing is, is it gives exposure of various types of careers to students who wouldn't otherwise get that kind of exposure. And I think that that's a very important thing, particularly for many of our underserved kids whose parents don't have the kind of backgrounds to expose them to different things. So thank you.
Ms. Sevens?
Sure. So thank you for this presentation, it was really wonderful, and I'm going to associate myself with the comments of Ms. Wolf. What people don't understand is that the board is able to get, gain professional development, and we do that through going to the school board conferences, whether it's through the state of Maryland or the National School Board Association. So we were able to visit the school in California because of the National School Boards Associations having their conference, and we did say that the students learned their RIASEC score, like, just knowing that was huge, and you did see it infused throughout everything, and it was, it's great to see. We did try to say, can you come to Montgomery County? Not knowing that we would have this opportunity. And I'll just say, too, it's not oftentimes that you see people that are doing the work, our partners, where you are able to experience their expertise. So Mr. Featherstone, when you came here, I met you a couple of years back at the Summer Rise ending ceremony, right? We had a lunch meeting, and after we kind of went through the pleasantries, he went straight into it, like, so for around career and college readiness, what are you all doing around the blueprint? So I appreciate that you came here, you were immediately thinking about the end goal, the work that we would have to do, and wanting to kind of dive into that before we were even sending in our implementation plan. So I do appreciate that. And not only that, what gives me hope is to be able to see, so I follow you all on social media, so WorkSource Montgomery is everywhere in the community, at our schools, and what you said earlier is very true, that you're doing the work, you've been doing the work early on around partnering with other organizations that provide services to our families, to be able to understand, like, the social impact, right? To be able to understand how that can in turn help our families and our students. So I have great faith in the work that you all will be able to do. I think it would also be really helpful, when you're doing these community engagement sessions, if you have video from California where the students can speak to their RIASEC scores, because I tell you, I was challenged by some elementary students to, they asked me what was mine, and I was caught flat-footed, I could not say. I said, I need to study, I need to go back and look and see. But I do, as Ms. Wolf mentioned, I went back into my camera to pull up the pictures, because we did, we were in the library, I took pictures. It was in April of 2022. And what I think is going to be really impactful and really important is that as we speak, as we do this work, that it also will help where our community partners are at in this, because our students, the students in California were able to see all the careers, and the RIASEC scores were matched up to the various careers. So it will help them to see, early on, as they're learning about it, what careers match up to what scores, right? So that was really important. And I think as we have community partners come in and, and come and talk about career, on Career Day, if they could, whatever school, if they're going to those schools that are implementing the program and having the career coaches, if they're able to tie their career back to the RIASEC score, I, I do think it's going to be really important, and I'm glad we're starting in middle school, but we'll just say that we, we could see it with our own eyes, that our elementary students were able to determine and figure out where their skill set was, right? So this was, this is really good, is going to be really important for Montgomery County, and I'm happy that we're doing this work. So just thank you all. Thank you all in advance for what I know you're going to do, right? Because it's a lot. But just thank you for the presentation.
Mrs. Madraski?
Yeah, I too want to thank you for the presentation. While I didn't get to see the program in action, I heard so much about it and so many amazing things about it. I've been on the board for 11 years, 11 and a half years, whatever, and we've been talking from day one about career opportunities and helping kids understand. I had two, well, one particular child who graduated from MCPS and spent two unuseful gap years trying to figure out a, a life for themselves before they joined the military. But I just, I, so I'm so, so excited to see this, and I love this partnership. I think that it's a great team, being able to know that there are results elsewhere that we've seen in action. My only concern is, and Ms. Silvestri mentioned it earlier, but really making sure, how we're making sure that we're touching every child. And without a checklist, like, literally to say, I've met with this child, I've met with this child, you know, we have career counselors in our high schools currently, and my daughter never met with anybody, no one ever reached out to her and said, you want to come and talk to me about what you want to do, ever. to me about what you want to do, ever. So, you know, I just, I want to make sure, and especially like even our alternative programs and stuff, you know, now that that's an opt-in program as opposed to just a, you're assigned to their program, you know, having that kind of direction and stuff is going to be just critical. And I just want to know, really better understand how you're going to endure. Every child gets, gets to benefit from all of this.
Thank you for that. Yes, it's, it's a priority of this group to come up with an answer to that question. The short-term answer to that question is layers of support, because you're going to have not all of the work on the backs of the career advisors. It's not all on the career champions. It's not all on the student advisory group. It's not all on existing CCIC work. It's a case, it's shared. It's a community of practice. And so that means we need checkpoints where we check in with kids. So, we're not checking in on implementation, operational, X kid got Y hours. Because that's a, we can, we will capture that, that'll be interesting, but that's not going to show you the results. Let me give you an anecdote from your own backyard here.
Yes.
So, the now infamous Ed Hidalgo, apparently. To, to come out and show what this work looks and feels like, we came out and did some work with kids. And Ed did a session here, about 45 minutes roughly, was it Rockville High School?
Several sessions.
Several sessions. And I'm thinking of the students who identified their themes, and we did a debrief, and we have some video of those kids. We don't have releases, so we're not putting it out there. But we have some conversations where we're learning how the kids are responding to this process. Forty-five minute conversation with one of your own students. At the end of this 45 minute, literally says the words, I've never thought about my career now, before now, but now I have some idea of what I think I might want to do. I think I might want to be, I think it was a physical therapist. Can you put me in touch with somebody? One of your staff, can I call, can I, can I say Art? Okay.
Dr. Williams?
I call him Art. So, Dr. Williams does a great job, says, hey, I want you to talk to this person. This kid meets with somebody in your house here who does physical therapy, gets to know what that's like. And then, if I may, Art tells me last week, last Friday, that student emails him and says, can I have a letter of recommendation? I'm doing an internship. So, one conversation with one follow-up with an expert, with one other staff member who bothers to answer an email. So, how do you measure that? How do you measure that? So, if we said, well, it's X hours and Y implementation lift, like that's interesting data, but the real data is to now survey that kid, how do you see yourself? Do you have a plan? Have you gotten the support you need? That student would tell you yes, in 45 minutes with an email and a phone call. Are you guys with me on this? So, I think what we have to think about collectively is how we're capturing and telling the story and making sure every kid has a chance to tell their story. It's not simply gathering implementation data. So, sorry for that anecdote.
No, it's okay. I appreciate that answer. And I don't know if you wanted to add something, but I, my last question was, you know, in California, they're doing it in elementary school. You're talking about ninth grade and sixth grade. And I'm just curious about eighth grade, because a lot of our ninth graders, like if they want to go the medical route, they have to start in ninth grade. And if they don't realize that, they find out too late and then they can't participate in our medical career program.
So, when we mentioned sixth grade and ninth grade, that's an entry point. And we're going to have experiences this year for sixth graders and ninth graders. But this work will be infused through schools. The conversations will be happening. Even as a math teacher, I had a mixture of ninth, 10th, 11th graders in certain classes. So, we're not saying ninth graders, this is only for you. The others will talk to you later. But in terms of rolling out and adding services and opportunities for students, this year, we're starting with grade six and ninth and those experiences. But all students, starting this year, will have these conversations and will begin this work with them. And they'll hear about it in their schools. Naturally, our seniors will, will have less time with our seniors than with our sixth graders, who will have it over the course of six years. But the work starts now. It starts now. I'm sorry.
Did you want to add something?
If I'm good.
Yep.
Your first comment around scope and scale. Welcome to my nightmares. So, there are models on, in the state where people are taking their allocation from the state and they're dividing it by whatever the salary is that they're going to pay a career coach. And then they're deploying career coaches and those career coaches, and it's on them to get to every single person. Eighty-seven thousand, it's just, the, the math doesn't work. There, you know, our allocation isn't big enough. And so, when we first started the planning of this, when this group and others first met, we knew that we had to lift our gaze, if you will, to look for something that was going to not be dependent on 3.8 minutes per student per year, because it's just not happening. And so, that's why we did the RFP. That's why we evaluated national models. That's why when we, when we, that's why, in the evaluation process of the RFP, we had to find something that is pervasive, kind of like water, fitting into the schools, kind of like water, touching all the end parts of the schools, taking into account all the other questions that we've been asked about students with special needs and about students who have backgrounds and have just arrived here, all that stuff, right? So, we had to find something that could touch all of that. And understanding that the data backup lift is not going to be easy, but we weren't going to be able to do, we weren't going to touch everybody. We weren't going, the, the math just doesn't work, 87,000 young people. So, we had to find something that allowed us to get to as many people as we can through the multilater poach that Steve has mentioned. And we landed on this, knowing that the data lift at the backend was going to be difficult. That, all that stuff isn't built yet. We have to hear from AIB. We have to, we're building our internal systems. We have to integrate with MCPS. But that's all work that's on the list that next time we sit with you, we'll be able to give you a little bit more detail, a lot more detail.
I just, I want to say, I, I also appreciated the idea that, the concept that you were talking about, about utilizing our people in. But as we're coming up on, on budget season, I really hope that we allocate enough funds to make this be able to be successful. And that if we are asking any of our teachers or any staff members to take on additional responsibilities, that we're stipending for that, because they already have enough on their plates. And that you will work collectively and in partnership with our union leaders to make sure that everybody's on board together.
Then I'm done.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, a couple of logistical questions, I think, and tagging on a bit to Mrs. Modrowski's question, this may be for you, Mr. Hall. So, the initial outlay of, you know, funding for the program that you've outlined in Slide nine, that's coming from the state, but I'm guessing that it's not in perpetuity. So, when do we have to be looking at the base budget for this?
So, the blueprint funding overall starts shifting from more state to local funding, I believe, over maybe beginning in FY '25, and then gradually increasing over the next five years from there.
Okay. So, something to, again, to your points, looking at, you know, and I'm looking back at Dr. Addison, you know, keeping these programs evaluated. And then, okay, so it looks, you know, in talking about, so far you've hired 33 of the, of the career advising coaches, the goal is 48 or 49, looking at a diverse group. What is, what are the qualifications? So, if I see a job posting for this, what are you, what are you asking for?
Well, our, our current crop, it, it diverse in any way you want to talk.
But what does the job just say? These are your.
The job, the posting, the posting basically says, anybody says, bachelor's preferred, but not required if there's experience. Because we wanted to make sure we had as many, a wide a net to cast, to grab people that had the commitment and the ability to connect with young people as possible.
Okay. Okay. And then, you mentioned part of Montgomery County's role in this collaborative partnership is providing a customized certification. So, is there not an industry-level certification? Or it, there's a little footnote under there that said collaborative action process and communication arts program. Is that an industry certification? We're talking about putting all of these career advising coaches through?
I, I'm not sure what you're referring to there in front of you, but I can say this. There are a number of credentials out there as it relates to workforce development. There's certified workforce development professionals, there's the GCDF, there's others. However, our model is unique enough that we knew that we had to build something on our own. That's why we engaged initially Montgomery College to help us deliver that, along with Montgomery County Public Schools. And that sort of evolved into the registered apprenticeship, which then gives another credential to each of the career advising coaches as they complete that competency-based program.
Okay. So, it is an industry sort of standardized thing? You said.
It's, it's, it's an apprenticeship that's approved through, we have registered, standards of apprenticeship registered with the U.S. Department of Labor. So, yes, it's industry-recognized.
Okay. And then, last question from me, getting to some of how does this kind of get integrated into the work and when we're really engaging students to think about it? So, we have some great programs in, in partnership with Montgomery College and the dual enrollment program. And I'm thinking particularly of our middle college, MC Squared, early college. And so, you definitely need students thinking about that, because those are required pretty much four years of time. So, you're, you're actually getting your associate's degree before you get your high school diploma. But they're very choreographed programs. And I, I appreciated you mention that the career advising coaches, those are 12-month, 12-month career, positions. And so, I, I'm not, there's this question or comment, but I have heard, so we've had the MC Squared program at Northwood for many years now.
It started in 2014, under the illustrious leadership of Dr. Henry Johnson.
It's to my left. And I had, I had some folks from Northwood reached out to me this week, because they had a pot of students that are in the MC Squared program that had to take a summer course to be on track to graduate in, at the end of, you know, they're, they're graduating in class of 24. And, you know, all of these dual enrollment costs are supposed to be provided now, but they, these students, even though their farms, had to pay for them, because they were told that, that the program didn't cover courses taken in the summer. So, they're doing a fundraiser to make up this $4,000 budget gap for these students. So, because right now their accounts are frozen at MC and they can't register for courses for winter or spring. And so, now with blueprint, I, my understanding was that all dual enrollment courses, regardless of when, in the arc of the year you took them, were covered. But is it not so if you take a course in the summer?
It's not so if you take a course in the summer. It's covered for the academic year, not the summer school.
Okay.
Unless there's a separate MOU, such as the one that's in place for early college or PTAC. So, it's, it's not covered. The blueprint legislation covers no cost opportunities for students to duly enroll if it's between, in the academic year, not the summer school year.
Okay.
Unless there's a separate agreement with the local community college, such as the ones we have with early college and PTAC. Those special programs, separate MOU, one is grant-supported, has a cost that's covered during the summer.
Okay.
All, the other general enrollment, virtual middle college, jumpstart to college, those programs don't have costs covered in the summer.
Okay. So, maybe that's something that we need to make more clear to these students, so they don't get into the situation that these students at Northwood have come themselves into. But, okay. And, but, and again, if we've got these career advising coaches and students are choosing these programs like MC Squared, middle college, they're, they're being guided counseled in ways that they don't need, either they understand if they opt for a summer course, they have to pay for it out of pocket, or they can choose a trajectory in which they don't end up needing that summer course. But thank you very much for all of this.
Mr. Said?
Yeah, I want to reiterate a, a couple of important things and ask just a couple of quick questions here. So, you said you're a former math teacher and kids always ask, oh, what am I going to need this for? I've heard that a million times. And it's, it's amazing to see that we're finally going to move in the direction of, here's how you're using that. You know, I was one of those students, sometimes still one of those students, but I think, I think that's a really great thing that you mentioned there, because that is something I've consistently heard. And so, the fact that we're addressing that is great. I also want to address something that you mentioned as well about, you know, one conversation can completely change, you know, students' track. I have experienced that firsthand, students who just didn't know anything about the college application process, about the career, having one conversation, sometimes with a peer, setting them on the right direction. And that, that's very real. And, you know, something I always like to say too, and I want to kind of emphasize the importance of the student advisory groups in this, is that if one student texts another that there's going to be a party at 8:00 p.m., the whole school will know in two hours, and that's a fact. But even if we, you know, in other cases, if we do a bunch of outreach about this great program we're hosting, and sometimes we get almost no one showing up. And the reason for that is because the, the things that we're pushing out aren't actually interested, interesting to students, and students aren't interested in them, right? And I think that there's a lot of examples that kind of show that. And so, with the student advisory groups, I really just want to emphasize the importance of asking them, what do you want to see? What would get you interested? Like, if you're teaching stuff and you're seeing that students aren't really coming by the office, talk about things maybe like, oh, how to get into the college that you want to get to, how to get these scholarships, things that'll drag students in. That's the thing I've really, really noticed, it works. So, I want to emphasize the importance of that. And then, a couple of really quick questions here. So, I, I heard you have 48 to 49, that's the number you're trying to get to with the number of advisors. Are they going to be available in all middles and high schools with that number? Just curious about that. Yes. So, will they be going school to school, some of them?
Individual career advising coaches, one per high school, assigned there, embedded there. One career advising coach per two middle schools. Embedded and going back and forth on a regular basis. It won't be an A week, B week thing. That'll be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one week at one school, Tuesday, Thursday at the other, and then vice versa.
Okay. And then, the other question was, so again, trying to visualize this, is this a really kind of informal thing? You just walk in, like you just walk in the hallway and you stop by the office? Or is it like, I have to set up an appointment, there's a whole process? Like, kind of what does this look like?
We will be engaging with students informally. There'll be office hours. I, I don't envision people having to sign up. We're going to be having groups during lunch in the media center. We're going to be having groups after school. We're going to be having groups, you know, at some of the fairs and some of the other kind of cool events that different schools are doing on Saturdays. Our career advising coaches will be there with a table. We probably, many of you are familiar with our Mobile American Job Center that we lovingly call the bus. The bus is going to be there with our career advising coaches at some of these Saturday and, and evening events. We are going to get to young people in all those ways and a whole bunch more that the really smart career advising coaches are going to devise between now and the end of the school year. And I'll be, I'll be looking forward to telling you some of those stories.
Yes, I'm really looking forward to it. And again, this work is something we've been needing for a really long time, showing students the importance of thinking about your career early on. And I think the benefits that have, that has are just, you know, they're exponential. So, thank you so much for this work. And that wraps up my comment.
Thank you. The final question I had was around financial literacy. I believe that students believing that there is a way to pay for their next step is really critical, because many families don't know it exists. And they think, well, I'd love to become a physical therapist, but my family doesn't have the money to pay for that. And, and then, of course, different career options yield different incomes. And so, do you integrate financial literacy in this work?
So, as we launch this particular initiative, it's important to say, we are here and focused, and the career advisors are going to be focused on, you know, career advisement. And I, and for that purpose, the answer is no. However, the answer is, career and financial literacy are interwoven in the sense that incentives, rewards, costs, opportunities. So, it's going to come up and be part of the conversation, but it won't be, let's say, the topic of the conversation. There are also many mechanisms you already have in place, CCICs and other experts who can maybe be in a handoff, if you will, type situation for technical questions. And you have a social studies department, I believe, that has financial literacy embedded or interwoven into their curriculum. So, I think there's a, a relevance wrap to that financial literacy, meaning as you're learning these concepts, here's how it translates into your experience with career advisement. So, this is the ecosystem of, and I'm not to use jargon here, but the ecosystem of career readiness. It's not bottlenecked into one interaction with one career advisor. It's rather a, a series of resources, including financial literacy, which come up when you start talking about career exploration. As you're trying to weigh your options, there's a cost-benefit analysis that has to come up. That will come up when I'm talking to the CCIC, it'll come up when I'm talking to my career advisor, it'll come up when I'm talking about it in social sciences. It might even come up in math class, who knows? So, there's an, there's an opportunity here for financial literacy to find connectivity, but in and of itself, it's not the, it's not the point of this particular initiative.
Got you. Thank you. So, I want to thank you so much for your work. I know this was, this is a very ambitious initiative, and it's been a heavy lift for all of the partners. So, I do want to express my gratitude as. So I do want to express my gratitude, as has been stated. It's very much needed in our school system. Dr. Addison shares with us data on how many students actually go into post-secondary after high school. And I think a third of our students do not. And so looking forward to seeing that gap close with this effort and having more, more of our students have a plan and actually enroll in something after graduation. So thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
May I also thank the career advising team who's in the audience over there, including...
Thank you. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 6.2, our Blueprint update. And I will ask Mr. Hall to get us started.
Great, thank you. And as the team comes down to the table, we just got a very thorough update on Pillar 3 of the Blueprint. And so now in our next presentation, we will look at kind of an update more holistically around the Blueprint for Maryland's future. So we're more than two years into the implementation and continue working to fulfill the promises and visions and the changes proposed by the Kerwin Commission. We're proud that Montgomery County Public Schools Implementation Report was approved fully by the Maryland State Department of Education and the Accountability and Implementation Board this past August. MCPS is meeting all state and legislative requirements and in many instances, exceeding state expectations. We are currently, we are current on all informal and formal legislative reporting and understand the importance of reporting on our progress. We are leading the state, we are first in the state in leading the way in areas such as National Board Certified Teachers. We have 629 of them this year and growing. College and Career Readiness Pathways and Community Schools Implementation, we have 34 of the community schools this year. Our staff has been asked to provide technical assistance sessions for other local education agencies across the state of Maryland to help them create cohorts of National Board Certified Teachers and CCR pathways. A few of our MCPS staff are also participating as Accountability and Implementation Board, or AIB, advisory members, and several were selected as blueprint experts on the review teams. And I want to take just a moment to highlight our Dual Enrollment and Early College Program. So this came up in the last presentation. But some exciting data on our enrollment in college courses. So during the time from school year 2019, 2020 through '22, '23, so in that three-year period, the first three years of implementation, we have seen enrollment of our Black and African-American students increase by 75%. 75% more people participating in the program. That's an increase from 236 to 413. Enrollment of Hispanic and Latino students has also increased by 75%. So some great progress already being made there. And this current school year is the first year where we have had, where we have paid for those fees. And so as more people become, more students become aware that there is no longer fees associated with those programs, we hope and expect to see enrollment continue to grow. In addition, MCPS has accomplished the following. We offer 22-degree opportunities, which is more than any other district in Maryland. We have 532 approved college courses that our students can choose from. We graduate more students with degrees than any other district in the state of Maryland. And we are the only district that has a virtual middle college program where high school students can earn one of eight degrees completely online. MCPS has established strong bonds with participating childcare and private programs, providing them with consistent support and including them in the MCPS Early Childhood Professional Development. We continue to work in strong partnership with community entities and nonprofits such as Montgomery College and WorkSource Montgomery, and especially with the Department of Health and Human Services in the implementation of behavioral health and social-emotional supports for students and their families in collaboration with childcare providers. We are very fortunate in Montgomery County to have an abundance of community partners and entities that are fully committed to supporting our students and therefore directly and indirectly support the work of the Blueprint. We continue to communicate with MSD and the AIB Board about state funding allocations versus actual costs. We know that there is a gap there between what the, already a gap there between what the state mandates and what the state funds. And as Ms. Harris pointed out a few moments ago, that gap will continue to grow as the funding responsibilities shift from the state to the county. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Pugh, Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you. That's a lot of detail about the Blueprint and the accomplishments that we've had as a county. If you go to the next slide, I think it's important to situate this conversation in that it's a high level. It's a big picture, 10,000-mile view of some of the things and the progress that has happened. Because this legislation, as you know, is significant, and it is aligned to our strategic plan. It's no wonder many of our local legislators were involved in the creation of some of these things based on how our work was going. This board had an initiative about expanding pre-K, and this county had early childhood education as a priority way before the Blueprint was a thing. And so here we are now with a very significant piece of legislation that will change public education in the state of Maryland, both through funding and through efforts and through outcomes for students. So it's important to note that in the board's strategic plan, thinking about some of the things specific to strategic reinforcement, our recruitment to increase high-quality teachers. As you heard, we have many, many teachers already achieving that recognition and that certification, and more in the pipeline. So thinking about how you've already identified what's a priority to you, this legislation makes it possible. It does provide some additional funding, and it gives us opportunities to partner in the county. So next slide, please. So to remind you, here are the big pillars. We hope the visuals, and over and over, we can kind of concrete in our minds what they stand for. As I shared earlier, early childhood education and expansion has been a county initiative and a MCPS initiative. And we are continuing to work on meeting the expectations that are outlined in the Blueprint. It is aligned with the strategic plan because we also know how important early literacy and early education is to getting a good head start. Pillar number two, as a reminder, is our high-quality teachers and diverse leaders. And in your strategic plan, there are specific metrics that we try to meet each year in increasing our diversity hiring. In Pillar 3, College and Career Readiness and Technical Education, you just heard a very deep dive into one piece of that pillar. And each one of these have significant initiatives to lift up. But that one was exciting because it was brand-new and different, and we haven't done it before. In 4, the funding is different. And the way that it's coming through is no longer just a foundation formula that is per pupil allocation, but it's actually divided up into specific initiatives based upon the needs of the students, which aligns with our equity beliefs here about some students need more funding. And we need to be able to have the income and the programs designed to meet their needs in schools. The community schools are a great example of the more resources. It's an exciting initiative. We are a leader in that. Our communities are thriving with the support inside and out of schools where the needs assessment is done. And based on what the community tells us, those are the, that's how we spend the dollars to support students with the wraparound services. And then finally, governance and accountability is never-ending with this. It's layers upon layers upon layers of accountability, both locally here to our board and to our community and to our local funding partners, as well as the AIB you heard mentioned early, the Accountability Implementation Board, as well as the Maryland State Department of Education. And then specifically in some of those, there's accountability to the CTE Board that is being established. So there's many, many reporting features that will happen all throughout as we develop our response to what this legislation recalls of us. But also, and our superintendent has been very, very clear, that this is the floor. This is the basic. And then Montgomery County needs to do more for its students. And so today, Ms. Backy will give you an update on some of those things and where we are. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon. I'm delighted to come here today and to provide you a check-in and an update on the Blueprint and where we are. As you've heard mentioned, we are meeting or exceeding all of our targets per the Blueprint legislation, and that's no small task. I am going to talk a little bit today about the overarching goals that we have for this school year for 2023, 2024 in terms of the Blueprint. And then share with you, touch on a few high-leverage strategies in each of the pillars that we are using to help meet the requirements of the Blueprint. So first, we're continuing to align the work of the Blueprint to the MCPS Strategic Plan, the pathways to college, career, and community readiness, as well as the anti-racist audit. We're developing our Blueprint staffing team. We're just getting that, getting everyone on board and developing a strategic plan for its work. All the pillar implementation continues per the statutory timelines. And we have timelines that roll out throughout the year and each year in order to meet the Blueprint under various pillars. We are raising the Career Ladder Board, and a progress monitoring and implementation forum and board are to be established this year. We're meeting the Blueprint statutory and MSD reporting that's ongoing. And then we're, there's ongoing coordination with the Accountability and Implementation Board, which is the entity that was created as a result of the Blueprint legislation, the Public Schools Superintendent's Association of Maryland, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MAB, as well as MAKO, which is the Maryland Association of the Counties. So working in conjunction with other, within our own county and then with other LEAs across the state to make sure that we're all communicating, we're collaborating, we're working together to support one another. Next slide. Oh, and ongoing work with our MCPS internal and external stakeholders. Next slide. Can we go back to Pillar 1? Can we go back one slide, please? Thank you. Pillar 1, Early Childhood Education and Expansion. We are continuing to expand full-day pre-K. That means converting half-day classes to full day, as well as expanding full-day classes, and also expanding opportunities for pre-K students with disabilities, monitoring the teacher pipelines, including professional development and training, expanding our engagement and partnership with public and private providers and county early childhood education stakeholders, of which there are very many in the public and private sector. You've also heard a plan here to the board about pre-K expansion. It was also presented just recently to the county council. And there continues to be an ongoing high level of collaboration with Department of Health and Human Services and public and private providers and other entities. Next slide. Pillar 2, High Quality Teachers and Diverse Leaders. We continue to monitor teacher hiring and certification data trends. We continue to work to recruit a diverse workforce and also evaluate our hiring practices. We continue to expand our Grow Your Own initiatives. We're working with our stakeholders, including employee associations, to develop a Leadership Development Career Ladder. We are expanding our National Board Certification Teacher Leaders and creating supports for various cohorts. Currently, it was mentioned that we do have the highest number of nationally-board certified teachers in the state. We're leading the state of Maryland currently at 629 nationally-board certified teachers. We have another 857 in the pipeline in process. We have developed a NBCT network for diversity. There are approximately 126 members. Because one of the goals of the Blueprint is to get more folks nationally-board certified, but also try to reach out to recruit more men, more people of color, a more diverse group of folks who are pursuing NBCT. We also have a new cohort at Odessa Shannon Middle School, which has about 14 teachers. And there's a particular, this particular cohort is working, you know, onsite at the school to help to develop this cohort of NBCT. So we've got various different types of supports at different locations where we're trying to provide the training, the cohorts. And we continue to work in conjunction with MCEA on looking at some of the professional development cohorts, the recruitment and the training in terms of NBCT. We're also continuing our progress monitoring towards educator compensation targets. So the Blueprint says by 2027, we'll have a starting salary of at least $60,000. We're well on our way with that. We'll also meet our target of the increasing salaries by 10% by 2024. And that's been over a period of four to five years. So we're right on target with those. Next slide. Pillar 3, College and Career Readiness, including CTE. And you heard a deep dive into the career advising conversation today. I think it's very exciting. We're working in collaboration with Montgomery College and WorkSource Montgomery for our middle and high school students. And I think it's extremely promising that we're going to be able to reach, to work with our staff as well as with the resources provided by the Blueprint, to be able to impact so many students. We're continuing to monitor progress using the Ninth Grade Tracker. And that is a requirement of the Blueprint. So we have measures in place already to monitor our students, but the Blueprint requires that we gather data about our students in Ninth Grade and looking at their progress towards high school graduation, including their credit accumulation. So it's an early point that we're going to sort of stop and monitor what's happening with our students and interventions to support students being college and career-ready by Grade 10. We're going to continue to ensure that interventions, assessments, and school-day tutoring are meeting the needs of our underserved students. And again, we're partnering with local and national leaders in this work, and you just heard that presentation. Next slide. Pillar 4, More Resources to Ensure All Students Are Successful. We're going to continue differentiated supports for English learners, students with disabilities, and students who are coming from low-income households. We've had an addition of eight community schools, including now for the first time this year, two middle schools. So all of our previous community schools have been elementary. But this year, we have added Odessa Shannon Middle School and Montgomery Village Middle School. The current additional elementary schools were Burnt Mills, Fairland, Greencastle, Stedwick, Strathmore, and Veers Mill, which were added this year. So we continue, as you've heard, with the wraparound services, the behavioral health and other services provided to these particular schools. And there's more than 75 partnerships that we have with all of our various community schools. So it's really having an impact on our students and their families. All certificated staff have completed behavioral health training through our PDO Online for MCPS staff. And then there's been an expansion of behavioral health services, including screening and family engagement, some additional social work support provided at the middle school level. And so we're continuing to move forward in our implementation successfully in this pillar. Next slide. Governance and Accountability. You've heard lots about the lengthy list of legislative reports that we have to submit as an LEA and as a county across, in Montgomery County. But all LEAs are responsible for making these reports, and they go to, some go to the legislature, some go to the governor, most go to the AIB as well as MSD. Some information may go to the CTE Committee. So we're continuing that. Some of that happens on a monthly basis. And then when March comes, we'll then submit our next annual implementation report to the Accountability and Implementation Board. So the report that we submitted last spring in March, and that was revised and approved this past August, really collected the data from the year before and this current year. And so this next plan that we have in March will probably be a three-year plan that will be expanding out. So it will be really critical for us to be gathering some feedback and input from the community and all of our stakeholders as those extended plans are developed. We'll continue engagement and reporting to the Montgomery County Blueprint Governance, which includes staff from the county executive, county council, Board of Education, superintendent, our Montgomery County delegation, Intergovernmental Relations. These are all of the entities that have invested interest in us meeting the qualifications and meeting the requirements of the Blueprint and also for our students. We'll prepare to align with the MSD and AIB rollout of the new statewide finance and data system with the Student Information Systems. And essentially, the state has put this process in place so that they can drill down and sort of track the dollars that are going to individual schools, to certain groups of students. And so it's really a part of the AIB's accountability and monitoring. We are ensuring that we're meeting all of our formal statutory reporting. We will be holding a progress monitoring and implementation forum over the next few weeks so we can report out on our implementation progress. weeks, so we can report out on our implementation progress to the public. There's also an AIB strategic facilitator grant, which was made available to all LEAs. It's approximately $100,000. The dollars go directly from the AIB to a strategic facilitator, but that has been made available to us so that we can work with a thought partner who will help us as we move forward with the implementation in each of our five pillars. There will continue to be ongoing engagement with all of our stakeholders. Next slide. Okay. So you've heard us, you've heard some talk over the last two years about possible legislation, various concerns, will there be some tweaks to the blueprint? I think the, the AIB's take on that was that they would wait until the first, at least two years of the blueprint implementation, and then sort of gather some feedback, and maybe there would be, there might be some tweaks or changes or updates based on that. So there's really, continues to be a discussion amongst all the LEAs. We do meet regularly. We are working to support one another. From our perspective, MCPS has provided some workshops and sessions to support NBCT, to talk about the PAR process. We've connected our staff to pre-K staff in other districts to help to provide some support and to share some of the models that we currently have that are in place. But all of the LEAs continue to talk about sort of some unfunded pieces, the infrastructure that's needed, that we've got to build capacity in order to be able to meet all of these requirements. And so if we have a certain amount of funding from the state, how will we be able to absorb the additional costs of the infrastructure that's needed to meet all of those requirements? There continues to be a shortage across the state of eligible providers who are, who meet the requirements and are willing to participate in the blueprint for a variety of reasons. I think we're very fortunate in Montgomery County that we have lots of support systems in place to be able to help our providers, but the requirements are high, and it is taking some time for other providers to be able to meet with those requirements. One good thing that we're doing, I think that's a model for the other districts, is we're meeting regularly with our pre-K provider partners and our private school partners. We're having them join with us in professional development. We're helping them with the transition for some of the students who need to access some services. And so we're really have sort of wrapped our arms around those providers, and we're working hard to try to recruit additional providers to join. We have about eight community partners right now, I believe, that are part of either pre-K expansion or blueprint, and there are a number of LEAs that have no blueprint, private providers. So there's a goal of meeting the mixed delivery system, but it continues to be a challenge for everyone. Next, also ensuring that there's some clarification surrounding income verification for tier one as we expand our full day, as we continue to look at over the next few years, moving out to tier two and beyond in terms of eligibility, just making sure that all the, we're clear on what all the requirements are. So, so next, I'll just share a little bit with you. There are not any specific bills that are in play right now that would seek to make any changes to the blueprint that we're currently aware of. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education did complete a statewide survey, and what they did is gather some information to find out where there was a lot of energy, what are the issues that LEAs, that everyone is coalescing around that we're going to continue to monitor or watch. Some of those include capital costs in early childhood education, incentivizing private provider collaboration, looking at the quality rating system requirements. Are school construction budgets too conservative considering the needs of pre-K and CTE? These are just, some energy was floating around these topics. Should systems consider lease-based options? There was a lot of interest in diversity hiring and HBCU pipelines, the issue of the national board certification salary enhancements, if that should be expanded, if the state should cover some of those costs, some questions related to career ladder, and then watching very closely on the new CCR standards that will be coming out from the CTE committee as that research study has completed, and they're sharing some recommendations. So I think these are areas in which that we're watching pretty closely, that all the LEAs are sort of talking about that as we continue to go forward. So we'll continue to monitor that. We do have, you know, support from our delegation. We do have some of the delegates who were involved in the actual writing of the blueprint, so they're very, very much vested in the success of the blueprint. Next slide. So I'm going to open up for a discussion in just a moment, but first, I just want to take a moment to kind of congratulate our staff, our students, our partners, our parents, everyone whose input was involved in completing the blueprint, the first blueprint implementation report. We probably had 60 to 70 people, folks, involved in providing input, our staff, leaders, and also many of our community partners in helping to gather some of the data on the behavioral health. I would consider this to be sort of our second phase in terms of the blueprint. So we've collected the baseline data. We started off on our implementation. We're hitting all of our targets. We have lots of successes. I think there's lots of evidence that we're having a positive impact on our students. And in terms of the achievement and well-being of our students, we have more opportunities and access for students, for example, pre-K, college and career readiness. I think we're optimistic about, we have a new interim state superintendent who's come in, at that post at MSDE, and so we'll continue to keep you informed. We had our good news that came out yesterday about advanced placement. So I think we're winning as far as the blueprint's concerned. It's been quite a heavy lift for our district, and I think we have emerged as a leader in the state in the blueprint. Thank you.
And could I just add a couple, two more exciting points around what we've accomplished so far? One is around our teacher salaries. So there's a requirement in the blueprint that the minimum teacher salary raised to $60,000 by July 1st of 2026. So with the agreements that we signed last year with our association partners, MCPS will achieve that in, by July 1st of 2024. So as we talk about the blueprint being a floor, as Dr. McKnight has been very clear about, we are, we will be two full years ahead of pace on that, allowing us to maintain, you know, a lead across the state as we move forward. And then the other piece is, is Ms. Backy congratulated the team. I would just like to congratulate her and thank her for the tremendous amount of work she has put into this. She has been a team of one as we have implemented this. But the exciting news is that, as is required through the blueprint legislation and is approved by our Board of Education last year, we are adding two coordinators to her office. So that's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I know we're meeting with our delegation next week, and I think it's important that we integrate some of these incredible accomplishments so that they're, I know they get updates from you all, but we want to kind of plug in the things that we have accomplished this year. I will open up to my colleagues, Mrs. Evans.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you because you have been a team of one, and I know everywhere we go, and when we're hearing about the discussion of the blueprint, you're there. So we had our state conference back in October, and you were sitting right next to me, getting that information. So I appreciate that. Ms. Harris brought it up earlier, and I think it's been said by every board member that we do, the whole reason why we have the blueprint update, so that our community can be made aware, as well as we're hearing the updates as they come out, because this will be even heavier lift for our school system. But the good news that you shared and that Mr. Hall also mentioned is that we started doing this work before it was even a requirement, because we didn't want it to be so difficult for us to make this huge, this huge shift. And so, and you mentioned the national board certified teachers, and while we have a huge number, a lot of districts do not. And so as a member on the Executive Board for Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and Ms. Wolf is on the Board of Directors, we do hear from the different LEAs how, how it can or could be a challenge for them. And so the point of the survey was just for us to really think about and be intentional as we come into legislation season, how we can make this palatable for all of our LEAs, right? So I do, I just want to mention that it is important that our elected officials are understanding, our local ones, and so you meeting with our county executive and sharing the updates is very important, because that's a concern, that we don't want them to hear at the last minute what this could look like as we talk about our budget season every year. So just wanted to thank you, and I'm so glad that we're giving you the additional support and help, and you are giving shout-outs at MAB quite often about the work that you're doing. So I did want to acknowledge that and tell you that your work has not gone unnoticed and that we do value you, because this is gonna, once we can get it where it needs to be, it will be good for all of our, our students here. Yeah, so just thank you.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, the one question I did have is you were talking about that we're going to have the community engagement opportunities. So I was going to ask you what that was going to look like, but you talked about it coming up, we're going to have the progress and
Progress monitoring.
Monitoring, and so is that what we're going to share?
Looking to try to confirm some dates, but it will be made public and likely televised so the community can see.
Okay, very good, because it did come up a little bit in
A forum.
Yes, it came up a little bit in some of our budget forums, but not to the extent that we would have liked. So I'm glad that we are going to do some community engagement around that. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, just a quick question. Looking at slide six, pillar two, our, you know, development of the workforce, one of the things that was proposed as an accelerator for the FY24 operating budget was a summer teacher institute that went away. We were not able to fund that, given the budget landscape in which we found ourselves. But I'm just wondering, you know, just for, you know, forward, you know, we're looking at operating budget, you know, proposals for the next academic year for FY25 now. If the summer teacher institute were something that was coming forward, how would that align with this work, or how would it help achieve some of these goals?
Well, it's certainly aligned with
Microphone.
It's certainly aligned with the strategic plan in terms of operational excellence and high-quality staff. When you refer to summer teacher institute, are you referring to additional professional development or teacher
It was something that was, that we were proposing for last year, and I was just wondering, would that be an, an opportunity for teachers who are interested in becoming nationally-board certified to do some of that work? We didn't really fully flesh out the vision, because of course, we could not fund it, but it was, it was something that came forward, so.
I think that's certainly something that we can explore. I think we're trying to build additional national board certified teachers, and there is a partnership that we have with MCEA where there are certain components, online courses, and other resources that are made available, so teachers can continue to sign up for those courses and those components. But I think we can look into alignment that might exist for summer teacher institute.
Yep, yeah, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I'm going to, thank you so much
Thank you.
For the update and look forward to the engagement and the work ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item number seven. We're going to get a presentation on the MECA Business Learning Institute Charter School. Mr. Hall.
All right. So I'm just going to provide a little bit of background here, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Hazel and Ms. Williams to, to talk through the presentation. So on April 1st of 2022, Mentoring by Example Foundation, or MBEF, College and Career Academies Incorporated, applied to open a charter school named MECA Business Learning Institute here in Montgomery County. On June 28th of 2022, the Montgomery County Board of Education declined to award a charter for MBEF to open the MECA charter school. MBEF appealed the decision to the State Board of Education. And on January 26th of 2023, the Maryland State Board of Education directed the Montgomery County Board of Education to award contingent approval of the charter, beginning with the 2024-25 school year, on the condition that MBEF demonstrate by July 1st of 2023 its ability to meet the financial and legal requirements associated with attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland. In July 2023, MBEF submitted a plan to demonstrate that it has, quote, "the ability to meet the financial requirements of attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland," close quote. The Board of Education denied the application, and MBEF appealed the decision to the Maryland State Board of Education again. On October 25th of 2023, the Maryland State Board of Education directed the Montgomery County Board of Education to grant contingent approval of the charter application, execute a contingent charter agreement, and extend the period for MBEF to meet the financial and facility contingencies until at least March 1st of 2024. So for your consideration, today is a resolution to approve the MBEF application and to, to open and operate a charter school in Montgomery County, beginning in the 2025-26 school year, again contingent upon MBEF, demonstrating its ability to meet the financial requirements of attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in the state of Maryland. And I will turn it over to Ms. Williams. Sorry, Ms. Hazel.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Good afternoon, Ms. Sylvester, members of the board. Following the background provided by Mr. Hall, MCPS has begun working with MECA to fulfill the requirements set forth in the October 25th order from the State Board of Education. Specifically, we met with them on Tuesday of this week to discuss a draft timeline that sets forth important dates within which the charter school shall complete the financial and facility contingencies required by the State Board. After you provide contingent approval of the application today, staff will move forward with the execution of the contingent charter agreement by November 21st, 2023. The contingent charter agreement includes contingency plans that set forth dates for MECA to submit four things, preliminary financial report, number two, a preliminary facilities plan, then, number three, a final financial report, and number four, a final facility plan. MCPS staff will schedule a minimum of three technical assistance meetings with MECA to provide general support and to review and provide feedback on the required reports. The contingency plan establishes that MECA will present its financial and facility plans to the Board on June 11th, 2024, and then on June 24th, 2024, the Board will vote to determine if the charter school has met the financial and facility contingencies for the opening of the charter school in the school year 2025-26. So at this time, Ms. Williams and I are available to answer questions. We also have our friends from Facilities and Finance here as well. And then after we answer questions, if you have any, then we will read the resolution for a vote. Any questions?
My colleagues have any questions, please turn your lights on. If not, then we can continue with the reading of the resolution.
Okay. Are you okay if I started the resolved?
Yes.
All right. So therefore be it resolved, the MBEF College and Career Academies Incorporated, application to open and operate a charter school in Montgomery County, is approved for the commencement of the 2025-26 school year, contingent upon MBEF College and Career Academies Incorporated, demonstrating its ability to meet the legal and financial requirements of attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland, and be it further resolved that on or before November 21, 2023, the Board of Education and MBEF College and Career Academies Incorporated will execute a contingent charter agreement, consistent with the Maryland State Board of Education's decision, that specifically enumerates the timeline and steps necessary to satisfy the contingencies.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous with those present. Thank you. All right. We are going to skip our break and move on to agenda item number nine. We are going to be discussing approval of pilot courses and curriculum updates. Mr. Hall.
All right, thank you. And so I just want to say, I think most of you know that I have worked in and with school districts across the country before arriving here at Montgomery County, and I think we do some really cool things here. One of them is having a voting member, a student member of the board. I've not seen that in other places, and I think it's wonderful. And Mr. Said has done a wonderful job filling those large shoes. Another thing that we do here that I think is really cool are these pilot courses, so that students can have a voice in what they're learning and what the trajectory of their education is. And so today, we're seeking approval to proceed with the development of new secondary pilot courses. Board Policy IFA curriculum, adopted in 2001, provides the process for developing and improving and approving and approving unique courses. The pilot courses, the pilot course process allows for schools and central services to be responsive to student interests, maximize student engagement, and provide rigorous and relevant coursework that prepares students for college and career. Additionally, the process highlights yet another opportunity for students to engage in areas of interest and take leadership roles in the trajectory of their academic coursework. The recommended pilot courses reflect a wide range of student needs and interests, which are made possible by the dedication, professionalism, and responsiveness of committed teachers, administrators, and central service staff across the district. I will now turn the presentation over to Mrs. LaGrange, Director of College and Career Readiness and Districtwide Programs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall. Good afternoon, Board members, President Silvestri. It's nice to be with you this afternoon. Yes, next slide, please. So today, we will have an opportunity to introduce some of the high school and middle school pilot courses that are being recommended for the process, and also to share with you information regarding the programs that are ready to exit the process. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So we know that teachers and students enjoy collaborating and ensuring that we have that student voice data in creating, engaging, and rigorous and relevant courses that empower our students. The pilot process includes the collaboration between central office and school-based staff. It's a three-year process that is initiated by the school staff and is supported by our curriculum team. This year, we have six high school courses that we are recommending for the pilot, two middle school courses. We have five courses that are continuing the process, and then we both have middle school and high school courses that are exiting the process. Next slide, please. So for our high school courses, we have, for the pilot, this is for the proposed pilot, we have Amharic II, which is really important. This is now the second course, and this does meet the graduation requirement. We have the Color Guard, Jewish people throughout history, mindfulness for teens. I'm gonna change the term, because I can't see that far. Here we go. Mindfulness for teens, principles of artificial intelligence and virtual reality design, social justice for public policy, and then the two middle school courses are literature and humanities and technical theater for middle school. These are the courses that we would like to pilot. Next slide, please. These are the courses that are continuing in the piloting process, and they are Amharic I, ethnic studies, Holocaust studies, Muslim global experiences, and science of sports and recreational activities. Next slide, please. And then this is what we're asking also for your approval. These six courses have successfully completed the pilot process. We have art and social justice, which is a high school course at Whitman, poetry as universal literature, and then for the four middle school courses, we have finance, greenhouse, horticulture, cooking, and mindfulness for secondary students. So those are the courses. Next slide, please. So at this time, any questions, or are we just ready?
Mr. Said?
I first want to start by saying, kind of reiterating Mr. Hall's points. This is such a fantastic program that we have, such a fantastic process, and I definitely do intend on communicating it to students. So I have a couple of questions along with that, which is, first, can you kind of go into the process of how a student can initiate the creation of one of these elective programs? Like, what are the steps and requirements and all that?
Absolutely. So the process, the student would speak to their teacher. They would share the ideas for the coursework, and then the teacher, we have an approval form where the teacher would speak to the resource teacher, so their team at the school level, and then they would reach out to central office. We have an approval process form, so then one of our specialists from our curriculum team would engage with the school-based staff, with the teacher and the resource teacher, to talk about the coursework, to talk about the standards that would have to be covered, to talk about, just the ideas for the overall course. And once that that's completed, then that's brought here in front of this group, and then the school has a year to write the course, to implement. So it's written in collaboration, the teachers at the school, in collaboration with the curriculum team, write the course, but the school-based team takes the lead on that. And they pilot it, and then they see they have the adequate enrollment. So a lot of times, you know, there might be interest, but then when you actually roll it out, we don't necessarily have the interest there. So we wanna make sure that we have enough students who would be interested in taking that course. And then if other school wants the course becomes piloted, if it's not specific to a single program at a school, if it's piloted, it's a general course, then other schools that are interested in teaching it, teachers can reach out to the school that has originally piloted. So for example, the AI course, or one of the other culturally relevant courses, the other schools could then consider offering that course as well.
Okay, so what's the, what are the requirements for a course to be expanded to other schools and like only restricted to some? Because from what I see here, and let me know if I'm wrong, all of these are only specific to one school.
So for example, the one, the Whitman program, yes, so that would be specific to Whitman and the other ones, so they're designed as part of their unique programs. But if we wanted to create, some of our courses are not, because we're constantly going, we're going through this process annually. So if there was, for example, if there was a course that looked interesting to a school, but it was specific to the school that received the approval, the teachers could still collaborate with our curriculum team and see is there something that we could create that's similar, and it's all based on the interest. So if the interest is there, the curriculum team is always willing to work with the school.
That's great. And then what are we doing to expand the publicity around this? Because like, I know that until like, a couple months ago, I didn't even know that this even existed, like students could initiate this process. I thought just someone in a room upstairs wrote these and kind of decided where it went. So I didn't know students could do these at all, so what are we doing to publicize it?
So that's what I, I love the comment that you made earlier today about the ways that we as adults are sharing our ideas and how we think we are on target, and then we hear from our clientele, our audience, the people we serve, you and other students who have no idea about the work we're doing. So I think that there are always opportunities to hear back from you and to come up with additional ways to market this. We know that our school-based staff, our adults, are aware of this process. This has been around for a long time. But I think that, again, the key question is how do we get this information to students? And we have the advantage of technology, you and our apprentices who are here in central office who can help us with that.
And then last question, sorry, this is, this is really cool. And then what is the specific process over those course of three years? Like, the course is made, like, what does that specifically look like?
There's a three, today's a three-year cycle. So once the course is introduced, then again, the central, the curriculum team supervisor works closely with the teacher. They look at what, the assessments, the assignments, the curriculum framework. They are able to come out and just see, speak to the teacher, and make sure that there's quality to the work, make sure that there's student engagement, and so it's, and that's why it's a three-year process and not a single-year process. So at the end, it's evaluated in the third year, and then it exits the process.
So is it piloted at any point in those three years? Is actually
Second year.
The second year, okay, perfect. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, this is, I agree, this is great, exciting work. And one, one observation, I'm really excited to see the technical theater for middle school course being offered at Luyterman, our longtime middle school with the performing arts magnet with its beautiful and sophisticated performing arts space, but this just reinforces the need
They're gonna need a technical
That we have all been talking about since the CIP hearing and last year for the technical assistance that they need to operate that equipment. And I seem to like teach the operation of that equipment, so operating budget, we're gonna get that, give them that theater person they need, that technical person. And I did have a question on slide five, courses remaining in the pilot course development process. I was having a conversation with students a couple of days ago, and a current 10th grader at Northwest mentioned that when he was a 7th grader at Kingsview, he took the science of sports and regional activities. Now, that was the virtual year, that would have been 2021. But that would have been, you know, this would be four years out from that, so how long does a course remain in pilot mode?
Right, so that, I would have to see if that, if the decision to continue, it was impacted, because it was virtual, so I think that's a good one for us to follow up, because it is a three-year process, a three-year cycle. So I think that would be a good one to follow up on to see why it's still on the list, if it was done virtually.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And again, I want to follow up on part of Mr. Said's question. So a lot of times, when I direct students to the course catalog and they see these unique, amazing courses, and they're, they wanna take them, and then it's only offered at this school or these few schools, and it seemed like, I may have totally misunderstood you, that you said earlier that these courses, once they are approved, so we're looking at six for approval, so moving out of pilot stage to approval today, but they aren't plug-and-play, it doesn't sound like. So if, for instance, the finance program that's at Gaithersburg Middle School, if Sims said, hey, we wanna offer that here, they couldn't simply take the curriculum that's been developed at Gaithersburg, make sure they had staff to teach it and then implement? They would have to develop their own course along the same lines?
Why is that?
Doesn't make any sense.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Roseanna Haywood, the pre-K through 12 science supervisor. I just wanted to address the science of sports course. So I know Kingsview, they started some of this work with their principal and their staff, but I know because of certain staff changes, sometimes these are developed by a teacher who has a particular passion, and they start the work, and then with staffing changes at times, some of it could fall, you know, just kind of shift a little. So I wanted to give them an extra, some extra time to pull their curriculum together, give them some more time to collect some more data, to see if this truly matches the needs of their students.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hazel, join us.
Yes, I was just gonna say, similar to what Ms. Haywood said, if it's a course that is specific to a program, then we usually keep it at that school. But if it is a general course, and we have seen that it is working well, and it's been approved, then we can move it out to other schools. But it just has to go through that entire process.
So do, does the, do the other schools have to apply for it, or you'll just offer it?
We'll offer it. Once it's gone through its entire cycle.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Hi, everybody, my name is Tracy Oliver-Gary, and I'm the pre-K 12 social studies supervisor. My former principal, sorry. And I wanted to address the question about if a pilot, if a course has gone through the pilot process and another school wants to offer it, do they have to create their own curriculum? And that's not necessarily the case. So for instance, in social studies, over the last several years, we have actually paid teachers to create frameworks in groups so that we could have a centralized framework that has resources, so that if a teacher at another school wants to, or a school wants to pick up that course, we can have some consistency across schools on how that course is taught. And so, like I said, we began that process a few years ago so that we wouldn't have such differentiation, and also where teachers wouldn't have to use hours and hours of time creating a course that's already been created.
Ms. Rivera?
Thank you. This is, this is great. I just have a question for clarification. So the courses that, like the horticulture, the greenhouse horticulture high school course, that, the cases were middle school, that, that was not available anywhere. So cases where middle school took initiative to create
Correct.
The course, to create the content, to implement it, and now they finished with the pilot. So then another school, like Montgomery Village Middle School, if they wanted to start the course, what would the process be?
They would, they're a resource teacher, and the teachers would collaborate, and they would reach out to our curriculum team, and then there would be a conversation about what structures already exist within the program. The courses vary, so some courses we are able to align and then offer at other schools, and if they're unique again to the program, they remain there.
Okay. And then the finance course, a case is for middle school, again, how is that different? I guess it's a middle school, because I know we have a high school for, that they get a tussle for, am I thinking?
Horticulture program, correct.
Yeah, so, so is there a big
That's different, yeah, that's different. That's a complete pathway as one of our programs, it's just a single course.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I appreciate seeing the Amharic II as a graduation requirement, because I think that's one of the challenges that we have, is that students have to meet all of their graduation requirements, and so their ability to take electives is limited, and a lot of these are electives, right? Some of the new ones that we are approving today are any of those graduation requirements as well?
These are elective courses.
And am I correct, and Mrs. Said probably knows, a student, a typical student can take about one elective per year, per semester?
It just depends on the programs they're in. Students have four core, at the high school, four core academic courses, and math, English, math, English, sciences, social studies, and then students also engage in world languages. They might have a CTE program that they're following, they might be in a resource class. So it just depends on the type of schedule that a student is required to have.
I would say about two to three, usually. So when you're in middle school, it's usually like one, because they mandate a bunch of courses, but as you get to high school, two to three, to even four sometimes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, if there are no other questions, are we reading a resolution? We're approving the, let's see what it says here. We are going to get a motion.
Yes, I can move it, but is there a resolution or it's just?
I don't have it.
Okay. All right, well, I move approval of the pilot courses.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to share exciting news, that Dr. LaGrange defended her dissertation 48 hours ago. Exciting.
Very nice, thank you. All right, we are continuing with item 9.2, along the lines of our role as board members in establishing curriculum guides and courses. We are now going to move on to the curriculum updates. So Mr. Hall?
All right. Thank you. Today, the team will discuss curriculum updates for elementary social studies in kindergarten through grade three. We also will provide an update on both elementary and secondary English language arts. The Board of Education Policy IFA curriculum requires the board review and approve, board review and approval of plans for curriculum revisions. In June of last year, we shared the plan for revision of elementary social studies for grades four and five. Today, we ask for approval of the plan for kindergarten through three. Social studies is essential to the development of civic-minded students and literacy development. The new elementary social studies framework for kindergarten through grades three are aligned with the new Maryland State Department of Education Elementary Social Studies framework based on the Maryland State Social Studies standards. The framework also provides increased environmental literacy opportunities and in grade three, financial literacy. We will share information about changes in response to the state review regarding the secondary English language arts curriculum. We also will provide an update and timeline for the selection and implementation of an elementary English language arts curriculum. So I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Tracy Oliver-Grey, Supervisor of Pre-K through 12 Social Studies.
Thank you, and hi again. And I'm just gonna say, I'm extremely excited to talk to you about social studies and the changes coming to elementary social studies. In Maryland, there are three, oh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. There we go, there we go. So in Maryland, there are six standards in social studies: history, civics, economics, culture, which is called People of the Nations and World, geography, and skills. Those are social studies disciplinary skills. And as stated earlier, when we are crafting our specific curricula, we follow the Maryland State Department of Education's frameworks, but we also follow a few other things that drive our curriculum writing. One is the college career and civic readiness, which sounds very similar to something we have, right? It's called the C3 framework for social studies state standards. This, this framework provides literacy skills or a pathway for literacy, as well as the embedding of social studies disciplinary skills. But part of the C3 framework is also to teach students how to use their content knowledge and their disciplinary skills in order to take informed action in their communities. And we also, for elementary, we are embedding the learning for justice, social, social justice standards. We have that currently in our grades four and five curricula. We will be putting that in We will be putting that in kindergarten through third grade as well. The learning for justice standards, I do want to just point out why we, why this is extremely important, especially in today's context. The goal of the learning for justice, social justice standards is to help students to learn in an anti-racist, anti-biased way. But more importantly, the goal is to teach students to have empathy for others, to understand that people come from different backgrounds, have different experiences, how not to fear them, how not to objectify others, as well as to build an understanding of people within their communities. Additionally, a purpose of those standards, the social justice standards, is to teach students how to identify acts of hate, acts of bias, and how to respond to them in order to stop them when they see them. So I'm excited that we are embedding those social justice standards in our elementary curriculum. Social studies instruction is critical for students because it builds their academic vocabulary and contextual and background knowledge that is essential for building their literacy skills. Research, including the science of learning, has pointed out how critical social studies is in the development of, of language, I mean, of literacy. The Fordham Institute had a study a few years ago that actually pointed out that when students engage in consistent, year-long social studies instruction, their literacy scores increased much more compared to students who only have it for, say, let's say, once a week, or once a quarter, or one quarter or two quarters out of the school year. So social studies is essential also for helping to develop compassion and understanding of others. Lots of benefits for social studies instruction. Next slide, please. So there are some, some changes that the state did, but also something that, the things that we've added to, that to make sure that our social studies curriculum is, is reflective of our own community in Montgomery County. For all of grades kindergarten through grade three, all of these grades will see increased learning about what it means to live in a democracy. We have included environmental literacy in all of these grades as well. And something that we put in grades four and five, we're pulling into kindergarten through grade three as well, is the understanding the cultural diversity within Montgomery County. And once again, we're doing that not only to localize the learning, but to build that empathy and understanding of others, to stop the objectification, and hopefully to, to prevent acts of hate that we see in schools. And additionally, kindergarten through third grade, we're teaching them how to take informed action in their schools and within their communities. For kindergarten, a big difference is for students, this is something that's going to be new for students, is we're introducing concepts of equality and equity in an age-appropriate way. We are also teaching students of how people change their environment to meet their needs. So we're laying the groundwork on that environmental literacy learning. In grade one, in first grade, students learn about leadership. They learn about the characteristics of good leaders and how to identify characteristics of good leaders. And they began to learn about what it means to work for the common good. That is, that is being introduced in grade one, so that's new. In second grade, students not only learn about Maryland history, but we want them to learn about local Montgomery County history. And for environmental literacy, we will be highlighting our very own Rachel Carson's work in environmental literacy, and students will learn about her legacy. Additionally, students will learn what it means to work for the common good by looking at how our government works to improve local economies. In grade three, we used a lot of feedback, stakeholder feedback from students, parents, and staff, especially from students. And we've heard their demand for increased literacy, financial literacy education. And so for grade three, we're including an entire unit a quarter where students will do deep learning into financial literacy in an age-appropriate way. Some of the things that students will learn about will include how students make, how people make financial decisions, how and why they make those financial decisions, including the consequences of their decisions. Students will learn about why people borrow money. They'll learn about different career paths, why some people go into, why some people have to work certain jobs versus careers, the difference between, between a job and a career, and why people choose those different paths. Additionally, grade three students will learn about entrepreneurship. A goal of the grade three curriculum will be to prepare students for grade four by learning the historical context in which European exploration occurred. They will not learn about European exploration. They will, they will learn about the places that became connected as a result of European exploration, to set them up to learn about US history, which is where grade four really focuses on. They will also learn a lot about the uniqueness of Montgomery County's diversity as well, that cultural history. Next slide, please. OSIP will create the curriculum materials for grade three, but we are seeking to enter a request for a proposal for grades kindergarten through second grade. We've written grades, we're, we're still writing, but grades four and five, but including grade three. The, the choice to write for those grades in particular is because of the inclusion of so much local history and all of that. We can't find a vendor product for that. Additionally, with grade three, to have an entire unit focused on financial literacy, there's no vendor product that does that, no comprehensive vendor product. So though, that's the reason why we have sought to write for grades three, and we're seeking to write for grades three, and we sought to write for grades four and five. However, the curriculum for grades kindergarten through second grade, it's more traditional in a sense. And so the opportunities to find a vendor product for, for those grades is higher. To review, new curriculum for grades two and three will be implemented in the 2024, 2025 school year. But grades kindergarten and first grade will be implemented in the following year, in 2025 to 2026. Once again, MCPS is requesting to move forward to write grades, grade three curriculum. And we are, we want your permission to enter a request for proposal for kindergarten through second grade. And that completes my portion of the curriculum presentation.
And I will keep things going. Hi, everyone, good afternoon. My name's Keisha Logan. I'm the Director for the Department of Pre-K through 12 Curriculum. Great to be here with you today. Before I, if we go to the next slide, please. Before I begin talking about some updates around English language arts at the elementary and high school level, I just wanted to begin by acknowledging the public comments that we heard today. You know, just specifically, several of them were about the secondary English language arts curriculum. We value the feedback of our stakeholders. We have taken in what was said today just as with these revisions that I'm getting ready to speak with you about at the high school level. We are taking in feedback from our students and from our teachers along the way. Many of the, the people who provided comments today, we, we work with regularly. So I just wanted to acknowledge that feedback, and that helps us to ensure that the products and resources that we're, we're providing to teachers are the absolute best for our students. But to get into the first update that I'm here for is around our high school English nine and English 10 curriculum. The reason that we are in the process of revising these two curricula is based on feedback that we received from the Maryland State Department of Education. Back in 2019, MSDE began a curriculum vetting process across the state. And for us, they reviewed our English nine and English 10 curricula. And we did receive some feedback based on that. There was a score based on the rubric that was used where we, we received a two out of four. You also heard that in one of the comments. I just wanted to provide some clarification. That score on English nine and 10 of two out of four was on the previous curriculum, not the revised curriculum. So MSD has not evaluated the revisions that we're, we're talking about today. Just wanted to provide that clarification. But they did give us some really valuable feedback, which we are now obligated to take action on and implement with these revisions that we're providing you an update with today. They identified some strengths with our previous curriculum, most notably that we have strong writing components in both English nine and 10 previously, in addition to our variety of complex texts that we incorporate in English nine and 10. And so those are components that we're certainly going to keep. However, there was some need, need for improvement as well that we will be revising and incorporating. Most namely, ensuring that there are really strong connections to reading standards in our, in our high school curriculum for English nine and English 10. And so that's one area that we're bolstering. In addition to providing more opportunities for differentiation, scaffolds to really ensure that we're meeting the needs of our emergent multilingual learners, our students who are receiving services. And also enrichment opportunities as well that teachers can, can pull from for students who are in need of that. So there are some key shifts from the previous curriculum to the revised curriculum. First, we've restructured the, the units to allow for teachers to go into further depth with the units. That really provides the opportunity for teachers to pull out the opportunities for discourse that we expect to see in all of our English language arts classrooms and go deeper into the learning. Other shifts that you'll see, there's an increased emphasis on informational texts with the revised curriculum in nine and 10, and inclusion of text sets to reinforce, again, those reading skills, which we received feedback on. And finally, we've added in additional scaffolds to support the needs of our English learners and our students receiving services. Also wanted to note, because you heard this in the comments today, we most certainly looked at those free, open source resources and have incorporated resources and, and components into these revisions, namely Engage New York, Odell. They provide really wonderful, standards-aligned, free curriculum resources that we are, are embedding in our revisions. We also want to ensure that the valuable components that MSDE elevated as strengths remain as a part of the, of the curricula for English nine and 10. So we're maintaining a focus on student discourse. We're continuing to elevate choice where appropriate. And also elevating those diverse voices, not only from authors, but also from characters in the stories. I mean, that's what we have heard from our students, that they really demand to see themselves in the curriculum that they are engaging with. Can we go to the next slide, please? So here's a timeline for the revisions. We are currently implementing a pilot at grade nine in nine schools. And we are, we've just wrapped up quarter one, and we're getting right back into that feedback. So teachers right now are giving us feedback via a survey. We're going to be looking at the quarter one extended writing task. And so we're, the reason we chose to do a pilot with, with nine schools is so that we could make adjustments based on the feedback and that voice that we receive from students and staff and, and community members. And, and then when we go to full implementation next school year at all high schools, we will have made those adjustments and really, hopefully, provided what teachers need to meet the students' needs. And then for grade 10, we're, we're currently still revising grade 10. We're looking to pilot grade 10 next year. And then full implementation for grade 10 will be 2025, 2026. Next slide. And finally, I want to share a timeline for adopting a new elementary English language arts curriculum. Beginning this month, you can see on the screen, we are going to be soliciting a request for proposals, an RFP, to really seek proposals that align with our district's focus on the science of reading research and our shift to structured literacy. And so we're entering the RFP process this month. Going into December through March, we're going to be looking at what is submitted and really vetting and, and taking in that feedback and engagement with our stakeholders to bring forward to you in the spring possibilities for adoption of a new English language arts curriculum at the elementary level for next school year. And so we have quite the process ahead of us, but it's, it's a really important one to ensure that teachers have what they need to align with the structured literacy approach that we've been implementing. If we can go to the next slide. President Sylvester Allen, I'll turn it over to you for discussion and action.
Thank you. Just clarification, English language learners at the, that just arrived, they don't take English, ninth grade English, for example, yet they are in a?
It would be in an English language development course.
What is their curriculum?
Do we have someone from dummy here? So we're going to have?
So similarly, we do develop resources for our level ones and twos, for our newcomers, that is aligned to the curriculum that is being, that Dr. Logan spoke of. So our ELD team works very closely with the content team in curriculum side to make sure that the ELD curriculum is very closely aligned, but it has a lot more of that language, the language scaffolds that our level ones and twos would need. And then, once they get into level three and four, the expectation is that they are taking the general curriculum. But as she said, we want to make sure that those scaffolds are still built, built in. And hopefully, we're seeing more of that co-teaching taking place so that we have the building up of the language and the content together. So they should be very much aligned. So as we're working to make upgrades to our general curriculum, our ELD team has to join alongside them to do it.
And, but both, in both instances, those are curriculum that we have developed in-house. And when you say that those two need to talk to each other, that has happened or is going to happen?
It's happening.
And we heard about StudySync and Read 180. Can you remind me what those are?
Yeah, so StudySync is the vendor that provides our curriculum resources at the middle school level for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Also, English language development programs at the middle school also use StudySync. So that's our vendor that we've been using since 2019 for the English language arts curriculum.
And Read 180 can be used in, in a variety of ways. It can be an intervention, but I think what you heard the teacher speak to today was it being used for our SLIF students, or we used to call them MET students. And so that is something that we're, you know, taking a look at.
Middle school or high school?
High school.
Read 180 is also used in middle schools.
As an intervention, yes.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you so much for this work. You know, curriculum is what make, how we can do effective teaching and, and impact student achievement. So the first question goes to Ms. Oliver-Gary. We are developing the grade three curriculum, but we are purchasing K to 2. And in the past few years, we know that like our English language or mass curriculum have changed in our county, like every three years, it seems like. And they are expensive purchases. So will schools, will we have schools be able to pilot? Will teachers in certain classrooms be able to pilot this K to 2 curriculum before we move to scale throughout the district?
I'll say that we hadn't discussed the, the piloting. I'm gonna, we haven't discussed the piloting. I will be honest, that the, the current social studies curriculum, the curriculum for K to three is very old and outdated. And I am concerned about continuing to delay culturally responsive curriculum for students. And we have not discussed the pilot piece because that will continue to delay. The current curriculum, I believe, was written, I think, in 2010, 2011. It's, it's very outdated.
Let me ask a follow-up question because a few years ago, when we were changing our elementary ELA, am I saying it right, ELA curriculum, we didn't pilot it, but we say we were going to do community engagement. And I was in those meetings, and it was promised it will be culturally responsive. And I was in those meetings and it was promised it will be culturally responsive, it will be diverse, taken to, but the reality is, when we got it, it wasn't that diverse, it wasn't that responsive. So what mechanism are we putting in place to really ensure that it represent, right, the value you talk about, to help our students become informed, reasoned decision-making for the public good in the interdependent world, right? So what mechanism have we put in?
This is for the vendor product, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So actually, that's going to be written into the RFP.
Was last time as well.
Right.
Yeah, it was last time as well. And it was disappointing, that elementary reading. So, yeah, so I would really...
There are others, but we're also putting in the, if I can say, what else? Some of the things that we're putting in the RFP, we're trying to put in some safeguards. So for instance, there'll be a request that you customize to make sure that we are getting what we're, what we want. I would not feel comfortable at all purchasing a curriculum that did not represent the student body that we have, the communities that we have, especially in the context in which we are living today. It's extremely important. So what I know for sure right now is that some of the things that we are asking in a purchased curriculum, some places may not have, but asking for that custom, for it to be customized, that means we want you to do, to make sure that you're creating a product that meets our local needs, not something that is just nationwide, that's a prepackaged something, but something that reflects the needs of Montgomery County students.
Thank you, thank you. And I have, and thank you for organizing the mock board testimony. It was a powerful day that our students were here. I have a question about the reading, yeah, the reading curriculum for our high school student, also the elementary schools. Let me ask first about the elementary school reading material. Is this the first time we put out RFP for this? Or it's...
No, it's not. So we also did an RFP last school year. And really, to your point, Ms. Yang, we were not able to, with those vendors that submitted last year, identify through the RFP process, a vendor that really met all of our needs, that was really strong and based on the science of reading research, supported our shift to structured literacy, but also supported our, you know, having resources in Spanish was something that we were really looking for last year, and supports for our EMLs and students who need different scaffolds. And so, just as Ms. Oliver Gary said, we've learned from that, from last school year. We're doing some different things as we identify the RFP to make it more specific and hopefully get some more interest that will help us to really identify something appropriate.
Last question about high school English curriculum. So we have heard a lot about evidence-based curriculum and the reasons to read, the benefit to use evidence-based curriculum, right? Now, we are doing science of reading. So are we writing our ninth and 10th grade curriculum ourselves? Why are we writing it ourselves instead of going for evidence-based curriculum that's out there?
So there's a, there's a combination of reasons. Of course, once we got that feedback from MSD, seeing what the strengths were and also seeing where the needs were, the first question is, do we go for an RFP or do we make these revisions using some of the open source resources, standards-aligned resources that I talked about? And the reason we chose to go in that direction, so again, we will incorporate some of the curriculum resources that are out there and free and public, as I mentioned, so we won't be writing everything from scratch. But when we look at what the needs are, what the feedback is, and the cost of an RFP that really meets our needs, as we've just talked about with social studies, culturally relevant materials, diverse texts and authors, all of the scaffolds that I talked about that we want to, the connection to reading, we felt that hearing that feedback from our teachers and our students, taking the strengths from the current curriculum that was in place, as well as revisions using the open source resources, curriculum resources that are available, was the best decision to make.
This morning, there were some comments about consistencies, you know, within the school or across the school system. So I look forward to your work on, you know, the implementation of the curriculum. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, did you have your light on?
Yes, I have a question, and it may be very similar to Ms. Yang's. And you may can't do this, but on the social studies, you have Montgomery County cultural diversity. And I'm wondering if there is any way to incorporate, and I don't know what that means, Can the diversity be a discussion with kids, age-appropriate, about Muslims, about the Jewish community, about blacks, about Latinos, about whites, about Chinese, without it being religion specifically? Because I, I think that we got to start having these conversations earlier. And if you could incorporate something like that into your social studies, I think it'll go a long way towards helping our students see that they're not so different from each other, you know, and maybe alleviate some of the problems that we're seeing as they get up in school age.
So you're in my head, Ms. Wolf. That's exactly the intent. So when we talk about cultural diversity, we will be providing opportunities for students to talk about their own personal cultures and within the classroom to learn from their peers. But we will also be pulling an idea that I have, is for us to collect oral histories and stories of Montgomery County residents, to be able to use those in the classroom where kids are able to see the diversity of people who live here and discuss similarities that they have with others, differences, but also showing that that difference does not mean bad, right? But to craft conversations, and this is where the Learning for Justice, Social Justice standards actually come into play, crafting conversations that elevate how, how we should not just necessarily appreciate but understand and be able to not see something or somebody's experience as being bad because it is different, but learning to appreciate the differences. But that is the act, that is the intent for, for the curriculum. And that's the intent for grades four and five as well, for students to be able to have those conversations in class.
Thank you.
Ms. Revett-Aden?
To get back into what Ms. Wolf said, you said that empathy was, it's going to be in all of them and from kindergarten through the whole, and the whole, all the different grades, correct? So that would be starting in kindergarten?
Yes, those conversations. And that's coming from the Social Justice standards. So students learn about, like, one of the standards is identity. Another standard is diversity. So the idea is that, so I'll give an example of the grades four and five curricula right now. Each unit is tied to one of the four social justice standards. And students revisit questions tied to those themes as they learn, and they're constantly thinking about, so here's an example in a lesson. So one lesson in grade four is about the enslavement of indigenous peoples. So that particular group is the Wampanoag group. And the students are supposed to learn about enslavement of indigenous peoples, along with how they resisted slavery, assimilation, and colonization. Very high-level things for fourth grade, but we think that that content is extremely important. But students learn to think about, okay, so within a place, you have different, you have diverse identities. What are those diverse identities? What are the diverse identities in our classroom? And do those differences have to lead to conflict, right? They study in history where it did lead to conflict, but then they zoom out and say, is that necessarily the case? Where do we see examples where we see people of diverse identities without conflict? How do we craft, what are the conditions to be able to not have conflict? What do we need to do? So the conversation starts within the content that they're learning, but then it zooms out to themselves and how they're operating and living with others now.
That's great. I, I, thank you. But looking at some of the framework, like I was just reading the kindergarten, you know, these are some heavy duty. How do economic decisions and resources impact community? That's in kindergarten. I'd be like, what? I'd be like, what is recess? But I think it's great that we start challenging our kids, but with the same token, we heard, we heard about, you know, that, that implementation of this could be very different in different geographic areas of our county. So I guess my question is on the latitude for teachers to tailor it to the group of kids that they have in front of them, because it could mean different things to different populations. That's one. And, and following on Ms. Sylvester's question, for the ESOL students, I really would like to see what that looks like. I would like to see what you have, the comparison that, just like you did here for, you know, for the regular students, I would like to see the ones for the, for the ESOL learners. And the reason being, because we say newcomers, but we know especially in kindergarten, a lot of the kids are not newcomers. My kids were born at Shady Grove Hospital and their first language was Spanish. So, so they, you know what I mean? So they are, so I really, I guess that essence of what we're doing in English for ESOL learners is just a substance, it's just as important because you are building on that every year. So I, I would hate for any of the kids to miss any of the essence of those lessons because they didn't have the base when they were, you know, English second learners and so on. So just trying to think how, how you're going to make those connections.
Ms. Harris?
Oh, yeah, thank, well, yes, thank you. This is all very, very ambitious and exciting. And one thing I did want to elevate that we heard a little bit about in our testimony earlier, in our public comment earlier today, but I know it's been a theme that we've been hearing about from some of our advocates for a while, and that is being very, very mindful of digital balance in our classrooms, because they're not wrong when they say, reading a text online is, has real developmental and not positive developmental impacts on, on a growing brain. And it's so much, you know, having a book in the hand and reading that in that format is, is, is so much healthier for our young students. I just want to put that out there to make sure that we are not, that we are ensuring that kids are picking up a book and reading a book and not doing this. Anyway, just wanted to say that. And I did want to just say, appreciate all the comments here, and Ms. Oliver Gary and Dr. Edison, I so much appreciate how you are framing this conversation, because I think the key to being a world-class public school system is that we prepare our students for the global world they're going to inhabit, and that they, it's windows and mirrors. They see themselves reflected and their, and their culture and their traditions reflected in what they're learning in every content area. And they also see, and they also learn about and learn to understand people whose experiences are different. And that's how you create global citizens. And I, you know, we know, we heard it today, there are families in this county that do not want their students to learn about some kinds of people. And we, that has to be non-negotiable. If you are a student in Montgomery County Public Schools, you are going to learn about the diversity represented in your classroom, in your school, in your community. That, that is, that is who we are, that is, that is, that is the curriculum that we deliver, that is the, that is our, you know, our strategic goal, our, our core values. And so just being absolutely sure that we're not going to back down on any of this, so no, nobody can opt themselves out of any of this work, because this is who we are as a community, and everybody in our community has values. So I really appreciate the way you're framing the whole conversation. And I, but I did want to ask a question about, so we're a very diverse county, we're a very diverse school system, but not every school is diverse. I mean, we have schools with very little socio-economic diversity. We have some schools with very little sort of cultural diversity. So are we including in our professional development for educators, how they deliver those lessons? If, if we're talking about these really important concepts and giving these students these really important ways to see and understand the world when the room they're sitting in isn't, they're not, they can't really look around and see other, other kids who are different from them or don't appear to be that different from them. So is our professional development really helping our, our classroom teachers who's, who are teaching the concepts but, but maybe not in front of a group that is representative of the concepts?
Thanks for that question. I will say that for the grades four and five curricula, what we rolled out, we had our summer training, this summer, this summer, and we spent the morning, before we could even touch, because this is extremely important to me, before we even touched the curriculum, we had to talk about cultural proficiency. We had to talk about the intent of what this curriculum would be, understanding how you enter the curriculum, understanding why certain things are in the curriculum and how it may differ from the previous curriculum. Because I did not want for teachers to immediately go into looking at the curriculum, which is extremely diverse, extremely inclusive, and not knowing how to navigate that curriculum. So even for the kindergarten through grade three, that standard, to me, is without thought. That's just going to be there, that we have to prepare teachers to how to navigate conversations. We put out in our, in the grades four and five curriculum, we have identified throughout the curriculum where there's, there are hard topics, but guidance on how to navigate that conversation. That's in the lesson plan. So before you teach this lesson, you need to be aware that these things or these conversations could be had, but also how, how are you building your own background knowledge to be able to navigate the conversation? And here are some tips. So we've embedded that, and that will also be in the grade three, and we will look at the, if we need to do that for grades K to 2, if the vendor doesn't have it, that's something we can also do in-house to make sure that no harm is done in the implementation of the curriculum. But also, how are you fostering the understanding of others when, when the classroom is less diverse as well? Thank you very much.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes, so I turned on my light to just appreciate you both, Dr. Logan, for acknowledging the testimony that you heard and how we're taking that feedback. And Ms. Oliver Gary, since you've been in this position, we've been moving in the right direction for social studies. And I say that as a board member, as a parent, you talked about, we haven't had a change since 2011. Sydney is now a junior in college. She attends your alma mater, right? Yeah. And so I will say that, you know, it's important, you highlighted all the important reasons why we need to go in this direction and why our students need what they need. And so I just wanted to point out that I feel like there's a lot of intentionality, particularly with you saying that there's not a vendor that has the information that we want to be able to provide to our students, and so we're going to write it ourselves. And I know at one point in time, that's what...
We used to do.
The adults, right, right. Our staff would like to be able to do. So I, I do appreciate that. And I did want to say that you were highlighted in Bethesda Magazine, I did see that, that did not go unnoticed, and that's just a tribute or a testament to the work that you're doing here in Montgomery County. I just wanted to say thank you. Yes, and I can't remember which month that was, but I did see your picture, right? We're doing some good stuff in social studies, and I thought that this could not have been timed better with what's going on in our country, what we heard families say they want to see in the curriculum, that, I mean, we didn't orchestrate this, we're doing it, right? And we're talking about it today. So just wanted to say thank you. And I wasn't able to make the mock trials, but that was really important, so the pictures. And we want all of our students to know how to engage us, how to talk to us, how to advocate for what they want. And Montgomery County, whether... And Montgomery County, whether people are believing the hype, is a good place to be. We have some great people here, working hard every single day, right? And you have kids your own, right? You have kids of your own, of school age, and so, there's thought that's put behind this work. And so I just wanted to say, thank you to everybody for all that you do and will continue to do. Yes, yes, Ms. Hayes though as well, a high schooler and a middle schooler, two high schoolers, right, right, right? So they're growing, everybody's growing fast, right? Yeah, but I just wanted to acknowledge that and say that we don't celebrate ourselves enough, and we have good people doing some good work, and I just wanted to highlight that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Evans. I, I do want to say, one of the beauties of being able to write the grades four and five, and we write our secondary curriculum as well, is that we're able to respond to the needs of our students and families. So, for instance, conversations that we have in social studies, it's like, what are people, what, what are people really saying? How, how are we listening to our students? How are we listening to our families, to our staff? What are they saying? What's at the heart of what they're needing? And how can we respond? So, for instance, last year with the rise of antisemitism in our county, we said, okay, let's look, where are we teaching about antisemitism? Where can we elevate the stories? But also, how can we show Jewish people within a sense of, full sense of humanity as well to not only have, to highlight acts of antisemitism, but also to show full humanity, to, to not have a narrative just only in oppression? Additionally, we said, okay, how can we teach about antisemitism today? So for instance, in the grade five curriculum, students learn about immigration in the late 1800s to America, industrial age, 1900s. Not only so, so this is, this is a little background of how we think about things. So we're saying this, it's late 1800s, how can we show the diversity of people that represent our county? How do we include Arab history? So we said, who's coming into America from, from the Middle East? So we pulled in Lebanese history because we had Lebanese people moving into America. Okay, so where are we, is there an opportunity to teach about antisemitism? Where are those touch points? Well, the Jewish pogroms were going on, and we have an, we have immigration coming in from Russia. That gives us our opportunity to talk about antisemitism, but also to zero out to talk about what it looks like today. We're in the team, and, and one of the teammates said, okay, but what about Hispanic people? We haven't taught, where are they? They're not in the curriculum right here. Can we put them here? And I'm thinking, well, what, where, where can we put them? So I'm searching on the computer in the middle of this conversation, and then I'm reading about how you had a migration from Mexico into Arizona in the late 1800s. And I said, that's the time period, that's where we can put it. It's not coming from the East, and that's okay, we, because we're talking about US history. How can we talk about Asians coming in to America in the same time period as well? So our goal truly is to say, who are our students? Who are our families? How can we include their stories? Because the goal is for students to say, I saw myself, or I saw people representative of the group that I'm from somewhere in my education, and that's extremely important to us. And so, we're able to respond when we're able to write as well.
To your point, we had a, we have our annual meetings with various partnering organizations, and there was a parent that had asked the question of me as a board member, you know, Mrs. Evans, when different events occur and happen in our country, we want our teachers to be able to immediately go and speak to what's happening. And so my response was, well, so you know, we want to make certain that, A, the adults in the classroom are comfortable with doing that, which is why we provide the professional development. I said, but just for that moment in time, I think what we're trying to work on through social studies is to have it, have our educators in a place where we're not just speaking about that one, one moment in time, that they're actually getting that teaching all throughout in the classroom, so that when situations arise or happen, you can speak to, speak to it and be able to give some background as a point, as opposed to just speaking in that moment. And there's so much more context and material that we're leaving out. And so he actually appreciated that response. I said, because we just don't, we don't want to do more harm in that moment to share information if, if in fact, everybody is not prepared or has the information. But we want our students to know that all along the way. So just thank you for that response.
Thank you. And I, I have two questions, if you have some quick answers, I'd appreciate it, so we can stay on time. The first question, I attended Montgomery County History Conference last weekend, and they asked me, where do you teach local history? And I didn't hear Montgomery County history today, so the question is, do we?
100%. So, so here's another example. November is Remembrance and Reconciliation Month. The Montgomery County Commission on Remembrance and Reconciliation has deemed November as Remembrance and Reconciliation Month. I represent Montgomery County Public Schools on the commission, and so for the last two years, students have learned about local African-American history.
What grade?
K to 12. K to 12.
So, Mick, I can tell parents, go look where?
On the social studies page, webpage of Montgomery County Public Schools. All of the lessons from last year are on the website, the lessons from this year are on the, the website as well. It doesn't stop there, however. So for, in the curriculum, when we have, when we have the, example would be, in grade five, there's a unit that is on civil rights movement, okay? So something that we are doing as we are learning about local history, we are embedding that into the curriculum as we're writing it. So Scotland will be highlighted. In Reconstruction era, era, the, the documentary Finding Fellowship, which is about a local African-American community in, like by Kuntz Orchard, that story will be highlighted in the curriculum as well. The Rosenwald schools will be, so yeah.
I will nominate you to do a panel next year at the conference. See how we do teach Montgomery County history in our schools. And my last question, and maybe we can use it as a follow-up, is how do you ensure that teachers are following your curriculum?
Thank you so much for that question. I think that's a good, good place to, to wrap up our discussion. We heard a lot of comments today about implementation. It's something that we are certainly always focused on in a district as large as ours. We have to partner, right, across all of offices and with our principals. First thing that we do is we provide some very specific look fours for our leaders, for our staff development teachers, for our resource teachers at the high school level. What are those things you should be looking for that we should be seeing in every single classroom in regards to implementation of the curriculum? Go in to those classrooms, make those observations using those look fours, and provide feedback to teachers. That's one way to ensure that we have consistent implementation. As well as, here in the central office, us collecting data, like, we have to go into the classrooms, and we have to collect data across all of the schools to see what implementation looks like. And we look at that, and we look at trends and patterns, and we implement that and then, and then into our professional learning to build capacity based on what we've seen. And so, it's knowing what to look for, it's going in and looking for it across all the schools and providing specific feedback to teachers, and that has to be a constant cycle and a part of our process.
Thank you. Well, as you see, we are fascinated by this discussion, we could probably go for another hour, but we have other agenda items to get to, so greatly appreciate your work, and I know we need to do a motion in a second, so can I get a motion to approve?
Are we reading the resolution, or?
Is there a resolution?
There is a resolution.
Okay.
There is a resolution.
Whereas, that regulation, IFARA curriculum requires the board to approve curriculum revisions, and whereas, that Montgomery County Public Schools has developed curriculum framework documents aligned to the new Maryland State Department of Education Elementary Social Studies based on the Maryland State Social Studies standards, and will issue a request for proposal for kindergarten through grade two. And whereas, social studies instruction is essential to developing empathy for and understanding diverse people, as well as civic-minded students who actively participate in their communities to promote democratic ideals and to the literacy development of students. And whereas, Montgomery County Public Schools collaborated with and engaged school-based professional and community stakeholders in the development of revised curriculum frameworks. And whereas, a plan has been developed for curriculum development, purchase, and professional learning, therefore, be it resolved, that the Montgomery County Board of Education approve the development of new elementary social studies curricula for kindergarten through grade three.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to agenda item number 10, consent items. I will ask board members to let me know which consent items they would like to pull. Ms. Harris?
10.1, 10.2, 10.6, and 10.15.
Anyone else? Mrs. Modrowski?
Move the rest and block.
Was there anyone else that's gonna pull anything? No? Okay.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. All right, let's begin with 10.1. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get a better understanding. We have an additional procurement item for, is it, the tips procurement for the point-of-sale cafeteria software. We approved a $433,000 item in June, and this is an additional $93,000, and I'm just trying to get a good sense of what that is doing to improve our student experience in the lunchrooms. Because I will say, I'm in schools quite often, and the menu items that are publicized as being the weekly or bi-weekly menus just are not what I'm seeing in our cafeterias.
One more time, yeah, go ahead. Thanks. Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for the question. So this procurement is different than the procurement back in June, in that this is our annual contract with Heartland that provides software, excuse me, just gathering my thoughts for a moment. Okay, thank you. This is our annual contract with Heartland to provide our Newton software, so that when students come through the serving line, they're able to purchase a meal and purchase à la carte items, and it comes off their student account, whether they're eligible for free meals or not. This is something we, oh, apologies, my nerves are really getting to me today. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
So, question, I noticed in, part of the description was app scan.
The app scan, have you ever seen the students come through the line and they're able to use their student ID card and scan at the point of service? They're able to scan their ID. So that is the app scan feature. So this continues what we have in place year over year to enable us to take proper point-of-service accountability for students. We process free and reduced-price meal applications through this software, so we determine student eligibility that then relates directly to the point-of-service at the student sale. So it continues all of that software that we have year over year. The contract that we signed earlier this year that you're familiar with is the one that's going to provide significant enhancement and transparency into the menus and nutritional content of items in our schools. So as we continue to customize and build out that software, it'll be provided at school level, as well as on computers, smartphones, tablets, devices. We're very excited to build that out, so that will be really the enhanced features to students.
So the, do you have your student ID?
Helpful.
So, so the, the student IDs are now activated in that way?
The student IDs are already activated and already working, so when a student goes through the line, they're able to scan it right at the point of service.
That's new, okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
Some of the young students use it, some of them use their PIN ID, depends on each school's preference in which is speedier.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So, so this is an annual renewal to allow us to continue to operationalize that and some other features?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to 10.2.
Yes. I'm, that is the contract for, I think, $2 million for installation, reinstallation of turf fields at Wooton Paint Branch in Gaithersburg. I will be abstaining from this vote because I, I don't have enough information to know and understand that spending $2 million on artificial turf fields is the best use of our resources and the best type of fields to install at those schools. And I think part of that is, I don't think we've had sort of an open-minded, comprehensive, objective conversation on this issue in a while. And I think that's what my deep interest is, is that we do have that conversation, and it really be grounded in sort of where we are, it, really, it's 2024 now.
Do you want Seth to speak to it?
Yeah, yeah, or, I mean, I, I really am interested, I don't think we've done this work yet, I don't think we've had this, this kind of, you know, open-minded, grounded in 2024 that is really in aligned with what the county's doing, and I'd like to do that before I raise my hand. So I'll just be abstaining on this issue.
So, we definitely can, can start that conversation. I know that there's a lot of interest around that, and Seth can, Mr. Adams can provide some detail around this specific item.
And I, but I did want to highlight this in context of, on Monday night at our CIP hearing, we had our first ever official testimony from our Student Climate Action Councils. They came forward with their organizational testimony, and they elevated two issues out of the many, many they could have, and one of them was this issue. And I think attention needs to be paid to that. It's a sharp, committed, smart group of students who are really quite climate activists, and so when they speak to an issue, I think we should pay attention.
And if you could clarify, are these new, brand-new turf fields?
Good afternoon.
Or they already have?
So these three are replacement surfaces for existing, existing fields. And, and actually, the, the work that's associated with the replacement directly correlates to the testimony. So testimony talked about a lot of influences from crumb rubber infill. These fields, these three fields are the last fields that have crumb rubber. So this, this proposal is to remove those fields, recycle the material that's there. The, the company that's part of this will recycle and, and convert back into fields, you know, at, at other locations. But this field will, will, you know, obviously, the reinstallation will, will go in with organic infill, will address a lot of the heat concerns, you know, will address some of the other environmental elements. But the existing infrastructure is already there, the, the stormwater management that's associated with it, the, the other drainage systems, the gravel, the under, underground elements. But this is purely replacement of the last three crumb rubber fields that we have in our inventory.
Oh, can I ask a quick question? What, what is, so, these schools have turf fields, they have the rubber, those like, so what are we replacing it to specifically? What kind of turf?
So, so the organic infills have, have been a range of, of sand and, and other cork type of products. We've moved off from, from a couple of the other products that we've had, and, and the organics have been sort of an evolution of, of infill. But where we are right now is the, really, a, a sand cork type of mixture is, is ideal for, for our conditions. We, we've actually gone in and replaced, you know, many of the other, as we do the maintenance, routine maintenance, replaced with the similar infills along the way as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, where are you sending the recycling to?
So, so the recycling of these three will be transported down to Georgia, and they have a recycling plant there. So, past recycling efforts have gone overseas, that we now have recycling plants within the United States that, that does this work.
Great, thank you.
Will that be happening immediately? I, I mean, years ago, we had a situation where they were changing the fields and the, it got kind of put off to the back while it was awaiting removal for recycling, and it was a very bad situation for MCPS, so.
I remember that well. It was out there.
Sure you do. But how are we making sure that doesn't happen?
Yes, the process in which they, they remove the field has been streamlined, you know, from, from the experience we had five, six years ago at, at Richard Montgomery. So that they will come in, it's, they will capture everything, right? So it's, it's the infill, it's the carpet itself, it's all contained, relocated to vehicles and then shipped directly out. So we will not be storing on-site like what we experienced back in, in those days where we, we had the issue with the hurricane and washed some of, of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, can we move on to 10.6?
Yes, yes. 9.6, I just, this one caught my eye in light of the conversation I heard at our two CIT hearings, lots of concerns.
Lots of concerns about HVAC issues, and so, look And so, looking at this one, it's $6.4 million for Phase 5 HVAC insulation at Watkins Mill. And I thought maybe this would just be a good thing to use as illustrative of the HVAC challenges we face here in the county, and also a really good promotional opportunity to understand why it makes sense to fund our backlog, because I think it costs us money. It costs us a lot more money to maintain failing systems over time until we do have the money to fully replace. And, you know, long-term, it's more, that's more expensive.
Yes, and this is a perfect example. This is Phase 5 of a project, so, you know, the idea that we can just do everything quickly over summer, no, you know, it does take time. So Watkins Mill has been part of our HVAC replacement for quite some time. This project, you know, award came in at 6.4 million. So assume, you know, really think about that in terms of multiplying that by five. This has been a very expensive investment for the district, but one that has made a huge effort, a huge difference. And once we're complete, I think then students will see the full picture come in. And to reflect upon the testimony around communication, I'm not sure, many in the community know that we've done five phases of HVAC replacement at this school, so thinking about how we can better communicate and celebrate this work in the future is something we're definitely going to pay particular attention to moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. 10.15?
Yes, that is our monthly financial report. And I did just want to briefly highlight a couple of the things in there that are, you know, we need to keep an eye on. One is the projection that we are going to end our FY '24 operating budget cycle much closer to that break-even point than we traditionally do here in Montgomery County. And then the other, the projection about our group insurance trust fund being rather significantly in the red.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Harris, because there are some changes in this. What I'd like to bring your attention to is on page two, where we have that little grid there. So our, start of our FY '24 fund balance, which equates to our unassigned fund balance from FY '23, is $8,225,109. Just to put that in context, that's very low compared to our neighboring LEAs. Baltimore County has $82 million in unassigned fund balance. They also have assigned balance, which is used to fund the next year's budget, like we had the 25, and I'll speak about that in a little bit. Baltimore City has $48 million is in unassigned, and PG has $39 million. So just to give you a little context there, but our 8, 225,109. Basically, when we look at our total spend in all our funds, we're at about $12 million a day. So you can do the math there, $8.2 million gets us through about, to about 3 o'clock on one day. So that's kind of what we're working with now in this new environment. So out of that $12 million, 90% of that's on payroll and benefits, and that's as, because we issue 700,000 checks a year, mostly direct deposits. I'm saying checks, but it's 98% direct deposits. And the balance is paid on about 50,000 invoices a year. So my point here is that the Office of Finance, we deal with a lot of transactions during the course of the year. So when you're dealing with a very small fund balance, you've got to be right on the ball. So on a positive note, we do have seasoned, high-qualified staff to take us through this new environment, but it is new, and it is, keeps me up at night, just to let you know. So that's the 8.225. The other item on here, which I wanted to bring your attention to, is our projected expenditure balance, $1.6 million. Normally, at this time, it's about $19 million, and you might ask, you know, why did that go down so much? So if you recall, last year, we reduced the amount of projected savings from our lapse in turnover in order to meet the county's appropriation, to the tune of about $25 million. So as that plays out, we have an attachment to in this report, and if you look at instructional salaries, our projected year-end balance, which is our budget to actual, is zero. It's never been that. Normally, that's going to be around 12 or 13 million, and that carries through the year. What that, I think there's been misconception that, does that mean that we're taking away money from the teachers? No, that's just our projected salary and lapse, that's been there, which is now gone. So just another reason to be concerned, as Ms. Harris mentioned. The other area is our employee benefit fund. So this fund also is something that we want to keep an eye on. The way to explain this is, we, for the last couple of years, we've said that it's going to be close to zero. So actually, in our annual financial report this past year, we did end up with a negative $11 million. Now, we don't have minus $11 million in cash, because a lot of that, they call it IBNR, incurred but not reported, so it's an accounting situation. But it is something we have to be aware of. We think that we could possibly be negative, you know, by the end of this year in a cash mode as well, too. So just to give you a little background on this fund, it's, I'm going to talk a little bit about accounting here, but if you look at the revenue expenses, it's pretty easy. Expenses, there's two buckets. It's the benefits we pay, and it's the admin or premium costs. So one of the bright spots is by switching from CareFirst to Cigna, we saved $11 million in this area, which helped. So five of that was directly off admin costs, and five of that is lowering the cost of claims. Claims, that bucket, which is $381 million a year, that's in two components. That's the rates, which have increased over the last year, as well as usage, and our consultants, our healthcare consultants have said that our usage has gone up, you know, more than, you know, we were projecting. So that's another reason why we've got to keep an eye on this fund. So the other side of that equation is, what can we do about that, right? So really, we really can't do anything about usage or rates, that is what it is. So we have to look at the revenue side. On the revenue side, there's two components. One is our members' contribution, and that has, it's kind of what it says. It's what are our staff and our retirees paying for healthcare? That is a negotiated item, and as you guys know, that's been negotiated for the next year. So the last component of that is employer contributions. So this is where we'd have to kind of right-size this ship during this year, if we have to, which means that we'd have to find savings somewhere else to make this fund, you know, on a positive note there. We are looking, you know, we have looked at FY '25, and we'll be talking about that in fiscal management, that we are making a considerable investment there, too, to make sure that we're not in this situation in future years. But it will take a few years of increased investments to get us to that point. Sorry for that long-winded explanation, but I think it's important to see where we're at.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Yeah, and I do, I just do appreciate you and the work that your shop does, because running a budget for an organization this size is a gargantuan job. And again, you did it for me, coming attractions, November 14th, the sexiest show on earth, Fiscal Management Committee, we're going to be hearing from our actuarials. Don't want to miss it.
All right, so, are you still, Mr. Halli, are you still abstaining from 10.2? Okay, so let's do that one first. Can I get a motion to move 10.2?
I move 10.2.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Okay. Against abstaining. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to move 10.1, 10.6, and 10.15 and block?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item 11 is for informational purposes only. Can I get a motion to move 12.1 through 12.4 and block?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. All right, 12.5, we have a previous new business item. Mr. Said?
Yes, so we have my Safe Schools Resolution from the last board meeting. Just wanted to provide a couple of updates and address some things. First, the petition for the resolution has expanded to nearly 200 signatures. We had multiple testimonies today supporting it. Actually, I checked in our email, someone emailed the Board of Education saying they couldn't testify, but they also supported the resolution. So we had, there's obviously a lot of community interest in this. I know that I've been to a number of student leadership events over the last couple of weeks, from MCJC, which is Montgomery County Junior Councils, which is like the SGA for middle schoolers, and even just recently, my budget forum, where safety and security came up. Every single time, students covered topics that I listed in this resolution consistently. And I know students in MCJC weren't familiar with the resolution, so seriously, they were really hitting these points on the dot, as if they had read the resolution. I mean, it was really, really impressive. And then I just want to address the testimony that we heard today. So the first thing I want to say is that in terms of collaboration, right? As you all know, I worked with MCPS administration. I worked a lot with administration to really develop this resolution and make sure that it was open for school leadership, such as principals, even administration, to be able to work through the clauses of this, right? So as you know, Ms. Wheeler-Taylor, our Chief Security Officer, Mr. Brian Hall, Seth Adams, Dr. Henry Johnson, Ms. Sally Davis, and of course, our own Elsie. And, you know, I collaborated with a number of people who really know the system, and I want to just re-highlight that, that I really did everything I could. And the reason being was, I think the timeline for this was delayed a little bit. I was actually hoping to introduce it at the late September board meeting, but due to delays in receiving information, I had to push it back to October 26th, and that limited who I could communicate with, because if I had more time, it would have been a lot easier. But even then, I still went out of my way. And then, of course, we can't emphasize enough the students that were involved in this process. Over 400 students surveyed, and over 150 participated in direct oversight of this resolution. So I think that that's definitely big. And then one more thing to highlight about the testimony, which is the ID policy and the question of whether it's possible to implement it at a large high school. The first high school to implement this last year was Walter Johnson, which is the second-largest high school, nearly 3,000 kids. And since then, they've continued the program, and we've had four other high schools, and they've all continued the program. None of the principals, none of the administrators said, this isn't working, we're going to pull it back. Every single school that has implemented this, from, you know, my school, Richard Montgomery, which with about 2,400 kids, to Walter Johnson with about 3,000, have all implemented and successfully maintained this program. So when we asked questions about will a large school be able to handle it, they were the first, and they've been successfully doing so ever since then. So I just want to highlight that we have that on-the-ground, real-world explanation. And also, you know, IDs are really just necessary. Go to any college/university, go to any business, come here, everyone shows IDs, our students should be no different. But even then, I am open, if anyone wants to add in something around collaboration, I'm open to it, but I think the resolution is very comprehensive, and I've worked with a number of people to ensure that it's open for school administration. If you look at the wording here, all of it makes it open to ensuring that administrations at schools can implement this with ease to ensure that it aligns with their school's specific needs. So I just wanted to say that. If there's any questions or anything, feel free to let me know.
So I'm very supportive of your resolution and everything, but I was troubled by the testimony this morning that sounded as though we did not collaborate with them at all. I guess my question to you is, while I very much appreciate and respect, and I, particularly the fact that you have examples of where it has been working...
Yeah.
Would it be, you know, what would be the disadvantage of waiting the two weeks or until the next board meeting to have a chance to meet with them, collaborate with them, and get their input and feedback, and hear their concerns?
I think this really is an urgent issue, and kind of the main thing that I would say to that is, I think that we can, so this is being introduced to the board in, the plan that has been implemented, all that is coming in April. And so my thoughts are, we can always, in that second-to-last resolve clause, which says the superintendent of schools will solicit student input, I think what we can do that would be more effective would be to include principals, school administration, teachers within that. That way, it'll actually be more comprehensive.
Union leadership, I would...
Leadership, yeah, whatever. You know, we can ensure that over the course of months, and the actual implementation of this, we would have those voices, which I think would be more effective and more comprehensive, because if we wait two weeks and talk to the cap, I mean, they only had an issue with only one clause, and I'm pretty sure I could alleviate those concerns, so it would be waiting two weeks for, I think, really the same resolution with that included thing that I'm saying.
If you include that, I'm comfortable with that being, because it's not, this resolution isn't directly mandating something. It's more of an addition to what we...
Exactly.
...doing, so...
I agree with Mrs. Modrowski to that testimony from Dr. Handy was...
Important.
Important, yeah. And so we can just amend it to include collaboration.
With our union leaderships.
Yep, perfect.
All of them.
He's crafting something.
Because it affects everybody. It affects everybody.
Yeah, yeah, great points.
How about this language?
Okay. Additionally, the superintendent will collaborate with...
The association.
The associations and other key stakeholders. What do you think? Okay.
I'll second that. Amendment.
Okay.
So the first resolve says the superintendent of schools must modify the current comprehensive safety and security plan. And then, the third resolve is about soliciting input and feedback.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, I hear what you're saying.
I ask a question, because I think, what, I hear what you're saying, too. It seems to me that you need to revise the first resolve here in order to address the concern we heard today, as well as the second one.
Okay, that, we can do that as well. That was actually Elsie's original recommendation. We can put in the superintendent of schools, in collaboration with key stakeholders...
Yes.
...and unions must modify the, and then we can also include it later on in the, but we can include it at every point, every single point. I'm fully open to that.
Okay, so if I will either, I can move those amendments, or if you're moving those amendments, is it a friendly?
With the amendments.
Yeah.
Okay, so I was going to say, does this have to be seconded, and does it have to be, do we have to restate it the way it's going to be?
Uh...
In other words, should he read the resolves the way we are voting on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so there's clarity for the, for poor Ms. Van Dyke and the community.
Thank you for that clarification.
Let me just write it. So here it would say, in collaboration with the associations and other key stakeholders.
Okay.
And then, here, again, it would be additionally, in collaboration, okay?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if I can get this.
You can do it.
Okay, so should I just read the resolve, or should I?
Just resolve.
Okay. Resolve, the superintendent of schools, in collaboration with...
The association.
...the associations and other key stakeholders must modify the current comprehensive safety and security plan to ensure it includes the following. An expansion of the ID pilot to include all high schools with an emphasis on avoiding significant entry delays. Increased trainings for students and security staff on current school safety procedures. A strategy to support school-based administrations in elevating the monitoring of restrooms and implementing appropriate response methods. Innovative approaches to addressing and reducing substance use in schools. The implementation of additional security technology in schools that supports the safety of students. And be it further, the superintendent of schools must create a plan to enhance safety-related communication in schools that includes the following. A review and possible modifications to the current standard protocol for community and stakeholder messaging during school emergency situations slash serious incidents. Increased awareness of anonymous student reporting channels for safety concerns/tips. A public awareness campaign to promote student safety practices in schools. And be it further, the superintendent of schools will solicit student input and feedback through forums such as the Student Safety Advisory Committee that emphasizes diverse student representation. Additionally, the superintendent will collaborate with the associations and other key stakeholders. And then, resolved, the superintendent of schools provides an update to the board on matters delineated above by April 2024.
I just, I thought you were going to, in the beginning of the second resolved, add the superintendent of schools, in collaboration with...
Oh.
I just thought it should be added there, so...
Oh, okay.
...the rest of it is then kind of following suit with, it's all going to be work done together collaboratively.
Okay. Okay, so let me read that one. Resolve, the superintendent of schools, in collaboration with the associations and key stakeholders, must create a plan to enhance safety-related communication in schools.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. I appreciate it. Great.
All right, 12.6, any new business items? Seeing none. 13 is for informational purposes only. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. We adjourned.
There we... We did it.